Welcome to the regular city council meeting for the city of Delray Oaks. Tonight is Tuesday, February 23rd, and it is 6 o'clock. Karen, could you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Here.
Councilmember Shirley?
Here.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lintel?
Here.
Mayor Kerr?
Here. So Randy, could you please put the flag up? And Erin, would you mind starting us on the Pledge of Allegiance?
Gosh, I haven't done this on Zoom before. Okay, will stand up? I can't stand up because then you won't see me.
It's okay.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God.
Indisputable liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you did well. And Randy, thank you for your beautiful flag. We want to move on to public comments. This is the time for any general public comment, which must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. The public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered. There will be a time limit of no more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken on matters brought up under this item, and all comments will be referred to staff. On that note, anyone have public comments? I am not seeing any raised hands, either literally or on the screen. So I will close public comment and we'll move on to our presentations. Our first presentation is the Monterey Bay Area Self Insurance Authority. And Connor, thank you for joining us. On this note, I'll turn it over to you. Would you like your slides up?
Yeah, I don't know if I have the ability to share a screen, but I'll do that in just a second.
Randy, can you, do you either have them or can you?
It looks like I can share, if you'd like me to do that now.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's best if you share them Connor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me see if I could do it.
Take your time.
Pressure's on. Every time I do it, I lose the screen. Sorry, I just switched some things around on my desktop.
No worries.
There you go. Can you see that?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much for having me tonight. I work for Monterey Bay Area Insurance Authority. I'm the program administrator of the JPA. And I reported to our Board of Directors, which each entity that participates sits on, about the state of the insurance market, budgets, what to expect. And as you can imagine, I'm here tonight because I didn't give the best news. And we wanted to make sure that all the cities that participate are aware of the environment that we're working in for insurance and covering public entities, especially cities, especially with police departments. So I'm just going to walk through what EMBAJA is, how the city is obtaining its coverage, how it's structured, what our position is, and the state of the market pretty briefly. And I'm going to try not to take too much of your time talking about insurance. I know not very many people enjoy it. So Section 1, I'm just going to talk about intro to pooling, just to make sure everyone's aware of how cities are obtaining their coverage right now. I talked about our program in particular, and then the state of the market in the second half. And first of all, starting in the 1980s, and California cities faced a very hard insurance market, where it became hard to obtain insurance and it was very expensive. As a result of that, California changed legislation to allow the creation of joint powers insurance authorities, in which different cities would come together and counties and transit districts would come together and form a separate legal entity from the city and self-fund some layer of the risk and then purchase excess insurance, so that in some cases, a small city is able to pay for a very large deductible that the insurance market would dictate. So we cover the amount in between, and it's like a risk financing organization. In the 1980s, we had, there was tremendous growth. That's when EMBAJA started. And the key to it is that we are self-funding a layer, acting as our own insurer, and then attaching to the excess market at a very high retention, so that we're not at their whim as to where rates are going, that we can control our own destiny in that pooled layer where there's the most claims frequency. So just the quick timeline, in 1970s, the legislation was changed for work comp pools. In the 80s, that's our famous Time Magazine cover that talks about insurance being broadly canceled across America. And that's when the JPAs grew in the late 80s for liability coverage. And then in the early 2000s, one of the results of 9/11 was a very hard work comp market and pool membership, like kind of the remaining entities joined. Pretty much every California city is in a pool for at least one line of coverage. And mostly all are in for all lines of coverage. So here, the city, this is what EMBAJA looks like. The city is a member, it sits on our board, the city manager sits on our Board of Directors. That's true for all 10 cities. And then we fund and have our own organization that we manage. And then we join other excess JPAs that have specialty, like Irma, Karma, CSAC, EIA, now called Prism, for employment practices, general liability, auto liability, public officials ENO, workers' compensation, kind of all the different aspects of coverage, except for some are placed separately under small insurance policies. So within EMBAJA, we have our own, kind of the concern that's occurring right now is that budgets are going up, and it's due to claims development. And we're trying to make sure that everyone understands that we're more, we have made every effort to organize the city's coverage in a way that we are as frugal as possible with our dollars. And the costs are determined by outside actuaries. We have outside auditors. We work with third-party claims administrators. These are all different professional expertises that are brought to manage this JPA. The liability costs, 71% of our budget goes directly to claims costs in our pooled layer. So of that 29 other percent, that goes to buying insurance, paying for all these professionals. And insurance is the big chunk in that 29%. And then on workers' compensation, I'm sorry, under the liability program, your costs are kind of, the total pooled costs are controlled 50% on payroll and 50% on claims experience. So how big you are, and then how are you as a member, 50/50. And on work comp, very similar there, 60% goes to the claims fund. And then another large chunk goes to the excess insurance, and then all the different business expenses. In California, you have to pay tax on your claims that you're paying, that's in the other 40%. So, and that budget is allocated 30% on payroll and 70% on claims experience. And the idea behind that higher claims experience on the work comp side is to really promote safety in the workplace and recognize that workers' compensation claims in our pool there, it's a bigger program. And then the property program is just total insured values. How much is your City Hall worth? And we group, group purchase that line of coverage. This is, if you were to want it a visual, if you're more of a visual person, you have your member deductible at the very bottom. EMBAJA is the blue box through all lines of coverage. Then we participate in those other JPAs and the excess. JPAs have better coverage, better attachment points, better limits, insurance limits than the regular insurance market. So our blue box is the most expensive portion, right? Your deductible is a million dollars for general liability before you get to the next JPA. And then that excess JPA that is for other JPAs and our JPA coming together, self-funds up to 5 million, and then buys, we don't get to insurance until over 5 million. So our claims, we fund them, but we really are, if we start having a lot of claims, the costs go up dramatically, because it's in our own funded layers. And then the excess markets really react to large claims, and I'm going to get to large claims in a minute. But when we look at EMBAJA's finances, this chart, we took over the administration in about 2010. The JPA was not in great financial condition, and we've been fighting increased costs at the same time. So we have had this long-term plan to become solvent and then to have a net position and be in a great, in a much better position than the way we found it. But the moral of the story here is that we've never had a surplus of funds that we could return or consider offsetting rising costs with. That would be short-sighted. We're not in that position yet. If we continue at our current funding levels in the future, that would be great. And then the insurance, so that was all about our organization, what we're doing, how we're structured, and how we're trying to maintain costs. And then what's happening out in the insurance market? What is the insurance market afraid of? These are public entity losses that are all very recent settlements or final results at a jury. You can see the loss date there. These take two to three years to develop. And what you see here is high-value losses and a frequency of them occurring. And this is just kind of the excess of $30 million ones. A lot of the claims experience that we're now seeing is a million to 5 million. Things that used to be within a city's deductible. And public entities face a really challenging task. In California, we have joint and several liability. That is your 1% at fault. If you have the financial ability, you're going to pay the full settlement. You have jury awards right now against law enforcement liability-type claims. They're just ballooning rapidly. Dangerous condition of public property, very expensive types of claims. Police professional in general, there's a lot of issues there, including civil rights violations that include plaintiff attorney's fees, and then you have a whole new area of costs. Sexual misconduct liability with the lifting of the statute of limitations. That affected a lot of public entities in California and the insurance marketplace. An auto liability, at-fault auto liability with a public entity is a very difficult type of claim. And I can go into more detail with any of this, if you'd like, at a later time. But in the insurance market, the key issues that are driving increases right now are listed here for each line of coverage. The liability market is the most challenged area of coverage. So we talked about in the 1980s, it was a hard market. We formed JPAs to fund these large deductibles that were now required. In today's market, it is the same type of environment for very large cities that we work with. City of Anaheim that wants a $200 million limit. That's not available in the market anymore. The limits available to large public entities are dropping. EMBAJA and our excess, we're trying to maintain our limits. But that is a true issue, that even if you wanted to throw all the money at the wall, could you get more insurance? No. We are diminishing in what limits are available, and the costs are going up. And that this could be the beginning of even more market restrictions, where possible coverages will start to disappear, like law enforcement liability. We hope that doesn't happen, but that's the type of thing that we're starting to warn people could happen in the future. The pooled layers of coverage would continue to cover that, because it's driven by our Board of Directors that are making those decisions about what we cover. But the excess markets, like, we don't know what direction it's going to go in, but we're in a very hard market, is the takeaway. Workers' compensation relatively stable, which is surprising to me, considering we're in a global pandemic. This could either be the insurance industry being short-sighted on setting reserves, or hopefully somehow it's not affecting work comp rates too much so far. Pretty flat market overall, and if payroll drops, workers' compensation costs will drop. And then the property market, I didn't talk about it too much, but I think everyone's very aware of the wildfire challenges. I know Delray Oaks, you're not out in the urban interface in the woods with oak trees as much. But there have been public entity losses, and everyone's all grouped together in the state of California. And the insurance market is just trying to raise rate and reduce capacity, the limits they offer. Currently, we cover all of the city's scheduled locations at their full value. The coverage, you're in a great program. You don't have a wildfire deductible. So it's a very challenged market, but the reason I came here today was the liability market. And what this, the takeaway is to expect significant price pressures on liability and property. There have been a shocking number of high verdicts and settlements against public entities. And at some point, something's going to break, and we're at, we're close to that point. And to expect dramatic price increases or reduced coverage available for sexual abuse and molestation and law enforcement liability. For schools, K-12s, universities, they are already struggling with the sexual abuse and molestation coverage. And we have, there's the similar exposure on a city side, but it's not at the same point in the market. But law enforcement liability, especially over the last 12 months, has really become an issue. And then recently, we've had, the property market in California was already so difficult with fires and whatnot. And then you saw the social unrest targeting public entities. You saw Santa Monica City Hall get breached by protesters. It's just not healthy for a market that was already very concerned about riding cities, counties, large infrastructure in a wildfire zone. Just global markets are looking at California as a wildfire zone now. And then you added in urban unrest, and you see, it's a challenging market. It's a lot of work right now, frankly. But EMBAJA, our Board of Directors, we just are here tonight to say we are doing everything we can do to maintain the coverages you have and to control the costs. And that the increases that are being proposed are what we feel is necessary. We have a cap on our increases at 50% at the maximum. We hope not to deliver that high to you. I'm not trying to get into that level of detail today, but so you know, there's always that cap at 50%. And we're talking about overall, on average, less than that. Each member, depending on their loss history, it's hard to tell exactly where it will land. But as a general trend, liability across California, if you're looking at it just in the insurance market, it's a 30 to 40% increase right now, which is very difficult. And property, the marketplace is probably plus 50% and reduced coverage. But we're in a property program here where it's very large and stable. And it's, over the last couple of years, done okay with the wildfire losses. So I would target around a 25% increase. And then work comp, again, surprisingly is about flat. So that's the only area of good news I have today. Sorry, I was invited here to bring bad news. But I'll take any questions that you have. And really, the purpose was to, to share with you that we are doing everything that we could do to maintain coverages, reduce costs, and appropriately manage the pool for long-term success. And with that, some of the claims take many years to develop. So when you saw our almost solvency, we're very proud of that. But it's, it's not something where we could lay off the current funding at this time. So again, thank you for inviting me tonight, and I'll take any questions if there are any.
Great, thanks Connor. Ms. Lintel?
Yes, Connor, that was an excellent presentation, very thorough. As you mentioned, most of us don't like to hear about insurance, but it's extremely necessary. I did have a question. Increases, are they based on population size or number of claims submitted? Or how do you base the increase, please?
Yeah, so within our pooled layers, we have, we have X-mods, experience modifiers. So claims, so, and that's about 50% of the calculations are claims as, in comparison to our other members, the other nine members, which are all Monterey Bay Area cities. So we're looking at it as like a relative, are you, are you doing better or worse than your neighbor? And if so, your rates should go up or down. So there is that aspect of it. And then some of the excess price increases that are included are just, we try to minimize how much of your dollars are being spent there, but it's the insurance reaction. I'm just saying, I don't want to, I don't want to write your coverage anymore at this price. It's, it's not the same anymore. So, and that, and that's not, that's not X-mod driven on an individual entity. But, so payroll is one aspect, and the other aspect is claims experience, yes.
Thank you so much. And thank you for being here.
No problem.
Mr. Gagliotti, any questions?
Yeah, maybe one. I mean, the concept of the, of the pooling, basically pooling customers under the insurance was a good idea. But now, you know, now we, it could be, it could, it could turn out to be, those are more opportunities for claims to happen. Is it, is it ever going to make sense to maybe get out of a pooling situation and just self-insure for what we think our risk is here in the city?
Yeah, you could do, I mean, honestly, Delray Oaks with the police department, a police department in California are looking at a minimum deductible of a million dollars. So could you withstand in a single year, two or three claims? I don't, without EMBAJA being able to do that and share the costs, and then slowly charge you over the 10 years of your membership, I don't see how you could effectively do it, because the attachment points to insurance at this point in the market. I only work with, I work with a lot of cities, 10 through, 10 through this group, 13 through another group. And so we work with a couple of groups. I work with one city that doesn't want to buy insurance, that doesn't want to participate in a JPA. They have a $3 million deductible on liability. They have a million and a half deductible on work comp, and they have a $250,000 deductible on property. And they're a large city, they can afford those deductibles. But, but JPAs, you can see, especially for small cities, they're really critical. And again, like, in a JPA, it's kind of like a co-op. If we do well, we'll issue returns. Our board is the one making coverage decisions, and that's your city leadership, all the city leadership. So I would say it's honestly a fantastic solution. It's lower cost than a captive for those large entities like GE, or they would, they would form their own captive and run it like a JPA, but the taxes, fees, consultants, the costs are much higher. So California is a great market in, for public entities, and that we've allowed these JPAs to form. I don't really see a downside compared to the alternatives, especially for a small city, especially with safety officers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donaldson, any questions, comments? No? Okay. Ms. Shirley?
None for me. Thank you Connor for the presentation.
Yeah.
Connor, I just had to ask, so, and I may have missed it. What 10 cities are they? Are they the entire peninsula?
No, so next to Delray Oaks, Marina is in. If you go up to Santa Cruz County, Capitola, Scotts Valley are in. If you go out to San Benito County, you have City of Hollister, that's someone in that county. And then if you go all the way south, it's Greenfield, Gonzalez, King City, Soladad. One of them might be really upset with me if I don't say them all. But, but you get the idea. And immediately around you, City of Monterey is in, one of the other JPAs I'm in, and they're in with like Santa Cruz and Salinas and many other cities of that size. Yeah, and then Seaside used to be in our organization, but there was a falling out that predates me, that I can't speak to, but they're in another JPA now. And like Pacific Grove is in another, yeah, another JPA. But they're all, most all cities are in JPAs. The ones that aren't are like Los Angeles, San Francisco, San Diego, even Santa Cruz. I'm sorry, even Sacramento-sized cities are still in JPAs.
Got it. And, and I have to ask this because you dangled it. How are we as a member?
I don't know if you want me to get into that, I'll put it that way.
Well, you can just tell us, we're great.
Yeah, yeah, you're doing great. We, we've, we've had periods. So what's really interesting about EMBAJA, every, every city, you shouldn't point a finger, because there's always, the hot seat has been going around. And each city has, has had its periods of loss, of being a loss leader. And that's one of the reasons why our formulas are so loss-sensitive, in that we allocate 50% on losses. So if you're a good member, you get a lot of relief. And if you start to cost us a lot of money, there's a lot shifted back to you. This group has chosen to be that loss-sensitive. And it might be part of this issue is, in the area, a lot of cities are aware of other cities having issues. And it's good to be able to say that we are shifting the burden of those costs to that member as much as any JPA would.
Okay, thank you. I think I just signed the check to you, so it's in the mail.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'd like to go out to the public. Are there any public comments on this item? I am not seeing any hands, so I'd like to come back and thank Connor again for coming. And I don't think I've ever seen a presentation from you, so it was interesting. Thank you.
Yes, this came out of the long-range planning. We haven't done it. We were available if you ever have any questions, but sorry, we haven't been out before.
No worries.
Okay.
All right, thank you Connor.
Thank you.
So before we move on to the next presentation, I'd like to make a special consideration. There was a resident that was working with me, and I know was working with Karen and the city, preparing some public comments. And she was a few minutes late, and I would like to reopen public comment, just so she can have her comment. And then if, does anyone object?
No.
Okay. Okay. So I'd like to open it for public comment. And Cassie, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, sorry, now all of a sudden super nervous. I would like to have a consideration.
Cassie, if you could let us know who you are and where you live, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Cassie. I live on Portola Drive. Is that all? Okay. And I'd like us to consider the chicken ordinance we have here in Delray Oaks. I have a couple of reasons. One, chickens make really great pets. They provide food, they help me with my gardening, they're weed-controlled organic fertilizer. Another reason is I don't understand why we have a specific ordinance for chickens. We don't, in Delray Oaks, have the specific ordinances for other pets, like doves or cats or other guinea pigs. You know, it's like, for some reason, we've chosen to, to single out chickens. And I feel that, you know, to me, it's kind of like a big government thing, that we have a rule that, to me, feels very unnecessary. And I feel like this, the issues that people might have with chickens can be controlled with other rules. For example, you might, a person might get way too many chickens, and they might be noisy for the neighbor. Well, that could already cover under the noise ordinance that we already have for our city. And you could say like, okay, like your chickens are too noisy. You have too many, blah, blah. And I think, for example, like, as I mentioned before about other, other pets, like, if a person has too many cats, that could also get to be a problem, right? A person, if they have 10 cats, they could get noisy, stinky. Any of the problems that you might consider with chickens could happen with any pet. And that was that. Another thing I wanted to say was, if, if people still want to have a specific rule about chickens, I would like us to consider reconsidering the number of chickens. I don't think the number of five was researched, or that people could think like, nobody took the time to research chickens specifically and say five is a great number. Chickens being flock animals like to have a good number of chickens. And as chickens get older, a couple will die, and it's a good idea to have like a rotation. So at least an even number would be a good idea. So like six or eight instead of five. That's it.
All right, thanks Cassie.
Thank you. Thanks for giving me the time, sorry Kimberly.
You're welcome. For open, does anyone else, we had quite a few folks that showed up after 6:00. Anybody else have a public comment before we go on to our next presentation? I am not seeing any hands, so I'm going to close public comment. And I'd like to turn this over to- And I'd like to turn this over to Acting City Manager for the next presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next presentation is going to be given by Acting Chief of Police, Berkwyn. And what it references is it references a couple of issues that we've dealt with recently in the police department. In the past year, council has graciously given us funding for a new records management system, which solves some problems that were brought about by mandated changes in the state reporting laws. And there are also several other benefits that this new records management system provide us. And Acting Chief will get into that and kind of give you an update on why and where the city's funds are going.
Thank you, Chief and Council Mayor. I will try not to bore you too much with this. It is numbers that we're going to be talking about a little bit, but maybe a little fun stuff, too. If I can figure out how to share my screen. Let's see if this works. Are we good?
We're good, Chris.
Chris.
And Chris promised he would be under two hours, just.
Yes, I have a lot to say on this matter. Okay, there we go. So UCR, we're going to talk about, what is it? It stands for Uniform Crime Report. So we are required by state law to submit UCR numbers to the state. They forward those on to the FBI who collects this data. What the deal is or what we're looking at, and the reason why we needed a new records management system is because we're going from a, a different kind of reporting, a more intensive reporting, and a lot more data, which is a good thing for everybody. It really is. It helps, in terms of statistics, bring, bring necessary resources to necessary areas to combat these statistics. So if, for instance, we got a, a large number of crimes happening in a certain type of criminal behavior or activity, the, the federal government, the California, the state government, they can help bring to bear help for us. Anyway, what was important about UCR is that all the states have laws generally the same. A burglary is the same in California as it may be in another state, but not exactly the same. So it was important that they needed to come up with a common language so that if we were reporting a burglary in the state of California, it would be alike or akin to a burglary reported in any other state in the union. So UCR came about in the 1920s, believe it or not. And the first iteration of UCR was called SRS. It was Summary Reporting System. FBI began collecting that data in the 1930s. And believe it or not, we still use that exact same system today. A system called NIBERS stands for National Incident Based Reporting System was created in 88. And it was only until now, 2021, where it is being mandated. Up until this point, most of not all agencies in California still use the summary reporting system. And I'll tell you why NIBERS is much better than the summary reporting system. So summary reporting, we are only reporting 10 Part One offenses. Part One offenses are those offenses that occur. Even if we don't have a suspect or we don't know who did it, somebody comes to your house and steals something from your yard, let's say. We report those to the state. They report those to the federal government, the FBI. So that's only 10 total offenses that we are required to report. There's another 19 categories that we report only if somebody is arrested. The hierarchy rule is a big deal, and you'll see why in just a minute. So if one person commits several crimes in one incident, we only report the highest ranking crime. It sounds crazy, but it's true. So if this maniac commits a murder, and let's say a forcible rape and a robbery and an aggravated assault and a burglary and a larceny and a motor vehicle theft, the only thing the FBI will know is that a murder was committed, not the rest of it. You can imagine that that says a little bit, at least, about the accuracy of SRS. You know, it's not a full accounting of everything that guy did, not even close. These are the Part Two offenses. These are the ones that we report on only if an arrest is made. So if any of these things happens and there's no arrest made, again, the FBI will not know about it. And neither will the state. That does not mean that they won't be charged in some way. The Monterey County District Attorney's Office won't know about it. It may appear on their rap sheet as they were even found guilty, but it would not show up in our stats to the federal government. So NIBERS, why are we excited? We're going from 10 to 52. The other SRS are called Group One. These are called Group A, same thing. So now, rather than only reporting on 10 different crime groups or crime elements, we're reporting on 52, and that's whether we arrest somebody or not. That is a huge difference, and it will look, it will make our statistics so much more practical, I guess is a good word to put it. It'll be much more practical. And then we got another group called Group B offenses. These, again, are only reported if an arrest is made. I can give you a, a little idea about what those are in a second. So the hierarchy rule, it does not apply in NIBERS. So that same guy that committed all those crimes before on SRS, and only we only knew about the murder, we're going to know about all of them now, at least up to 10. Much better. These are the Group A offenses. You may be surprised, but you know, with identity theft being such a big deal now and fraud, those are not reported under UCR, under the SRS system. The summary reporting does not require us to report them. There is no way to report them in that. Now we will. In Delray Oaks, that's one of the, I would say, most popular unfortunate crimes that we deal with. It's the person that opens up their banking, their online banking one day and finds out that somebody's gotten a hold of their credit card and bought some stuff. So and and that's going to be the same for a lot of other cities. You know, I think it's going to really make a difference. I really do. And these are the Group B offenses. These are, and and you can see from the Group B offenses rather than the Group Two offenses on the other. These are kind of, I mean, bad checks, disorderly conduct, they're like lesser. So we got all the major crimes in the Group A now. So we're reporting more of all of the major stuff. And, you know, the drunkenness and stuff like that, we'll report it, but it's not, it's not as important as the Group A offenses, not even close. So a few different things before I get into what we're going to do with the airport. California, because we're cool, we don't have NIBERS, we have Cybers. And best name ever for reporting crime. And we're going to be reporting more data elements than required by the FBI. So for instance, and this is only for instance, I wanted to pick something pretty innocuous. Let's say it was a color that you had to choose from a list of a bunch of colors. And you had navy, teal, and indigo. So California, we can choose one of those three colors. When it goes to the FBI, the FBI gets blue. So if we have a building, it could have, California could break it down into several types of buildings. And but the FBI will get just building out of it. So California, what I'm saying is that even though NIBERS will help the FBI with a lot more statistics, California will even have more than NIBERS. And that's great, too. So since our merger with the airport, super important, what it did for us. First of all, rather than us spending all this grateful money that we got from council on a new records management system, which is not cheap, and the airport having to do the same thing, we got to split the cost. And that's really, really important. And since we split the cost on it, it was important to us for time, number one. And it just didn't make sense to do it otherwise, that we absorbed the airport's NIBERS reporting into ours. I didn't want us to have to manage two separate records management systems. I didn't want to pay for two separate records management systems. You can see right here, it looks like 17% in terms of the property type, pardon, the crimes against property. In terms of crimes against people, they didn't have one between 2016 and 19. So our, our really aggravating crimes will not rise as a result. They will a little bit. They would have to, right? But even the crimes against property, 17% is pretty insignificant. It's not going to throw us off that much. And what I'm going to do is because we're going to get all this NIBERS stuff together, we're not going to know if Delray Oaks had a good year or a bad year after we're done. We'll have all these numbers together, but we'll have never had them before. So how do we know whether it's good or bad? I'm going to continue to collect SRS stuff so that at least I will know, let's say, 2021, if all we had was NIBERS, I can't measure it. If I do at least know the summary reporting numbers that we would have had if we had to report them, I can measure it against 2020 and 19 and 18 to see what our crime trends look like. Year after year after year, Delray Oaks, in terms of its crime, has been pretty steady. I can tell you that without the merger and having more personnel, we are solving more crimes. And that's exciting beyond words. It, it was so hard to get away and, and get all the things needed to be done when you were the only one working. It was impossible to get someone else by your side to, to help you go out and do something. You just couldn't. You were tied to the city and you were here by yourself. With the advent of our Patrol Detective Program, which I'll hopefully talk about someday soon. Real cool program. I haven't even found one that exists anywhere else. Our chief, I don't know where he figured it out. But he had the idea, and it's basically taking a patrol officer, training him really, really good. So he's like a detective. He's on patrol. He's doing his thing. But when we need him, he's got all the skills. He's got all the ability to write warrants. He has specialized training, and he can help fill in these gaps where we can't hand, we, we can't have a full time detective. We need the people on the street. So we get the best of both worlds that way. I know it's just numbers. They are very important. Without your generosity, without this RMS system that's going online next month, the guy that does the numbers, me, who did summary reporting by hand for the last 20 years, would not have been able to do NIBERS by hand. It's too much. There's too much data. I hope that wasn't too boring. I love questions, if you have any, or if anybody in the audience has any. I'm not an expert on this stuff, but I'm doing the best I can. Thank you.
Thank you. That was, that was really interesting. Can, would you mind unsharing your screen so we can see everyone again? Thank you.
Unshare.
Okay.
Randy never taught me how to unshare. He's in big trouble. Let's see.
We're gonna, that's okay. Let's go on. Good job. Ms. Lindtow, go ahead. Hang on. You need to unmute. There you go.
Sorry about that. Chris, that was an outstanding report. And it was most interesting to see what you had to work with like 18 years ago versus what your capabilities are today. And it's really quite an advancement in our police department, which is outstanding as well as all the officers. And thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you, Ma.
Mr. Gagliotti?
No, I echo it, what Pat said. Thanks, Chief. This was a very interesting report. And I look forward to, I look forward to the summaries of the data that you, in the reporting.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, no questions. Great job, Chris.
Ms. Shirley?
Hi, thanks, Chris. That was a great presentation. Are other jurisdictions also using NIBERS? Like, is this being forced upon us or is this, was this a choice that we made?
It's being forced upon us, definitely. It's, it costs a lot of money to change something that has been around for so long and make your new system, which ours didn't do, do something that it doesn't know how to do. And so everybody was in the same boat. California gave us warning. We knew it was coming. But that's, I guess, that's, I mean, and NIBERS was invented or put together in 1988. I mean, I was, what, three years out of high school at that time? And you could see, nobody went to it, you know, because I don't know why. It costs money, probably. That's, most things come down to that.
So but are people in general pretty happy because they'll have more data available to them?
People are, okay, how could I put this? The people that have to deal with getting all of these records management systems to work correctly are pulling their hair out, of course. In terms of the data, you cannot be not happy with that. I mean, as you can tell, I mean, the mere fact that we're reporting the, just the single most, the single highest crime rather than everything that happened, it's not, it's not really showing the true detail of what is happening out there. And I welcome that. I really, I'm, I'm the kind of person that, I'll show you all of our numbers. In fact, you can look at FBI and Sam, but I'm happy to show everybody our numbers because they, you know, they are what they are. They're real numbers. These are real things that happen, the, the frauds that I talked about. It's sad, and I think that we should know about that, you know?
No, I agree. I agree. I like the comprehensive nature of it. Would you be able to take that data and disaggregate Delray, City of Delray Oaks and the airport so we can tell the difference between the two if, if we have questions? I know you're trying to, you're putting them together for your simplicity, but are we able to, to look at those separately?
We, I can't take, I can't untwine the money. The money is going to be stuck together. In terms of being able to say that, you know, in this month, Delray Oaks had 16 reports to NIBERS and the airport had two, I can do that. And I think I will have no issue being able to tell you as well what types of things that they are. It just won't be in a nice, pretty looking report. I'll have to pull the numbers out. I'll just call them from what we have. But with this new system, what's great about it is that it gives you the ability, under special circumstances, to list basically anything that you could ever think of that you would want to search. All you got to do is put a check mark on that button that, and you call it whatever you want to call it, and you can search for everything with that name. So we could have a NIBERS Delray Oaks and then NIBERS Airport. And you just, if it's a Delray Oaks case, click that. If it's not, you click the airport one. And that's the easiest way to, to separate those two. I just don't know what it will look like yet, but I'll, I'll figure that.
Yeah, that's great. All right. Super. Thanks. That's all my questions.
So that was actually interesting. So will this affect the numbers that you report each month in the agenda packet? Do you only do the top one when you talk about what happens in the city?
No, that's something that we can talk about. The numbers in the agenda packet have been, in terms of the format of that, it's been around long before anybody, probably on, besides, maybe Pat was here when the original forum came out. It can be whatever we want it to be, you know? I'm hoping it's not voluminous. But I took some things off of it when City Manager Pitt came on and, and the chief came on. There were some things on there that I didn't think were important. Still, there can be things on there that we may want to add instead. I mean, we have thefts and we have grand thefts. We don't have frauds on there, you know? So it could be more representative. I just, it would be kind of up to the council, you know? We're not about, we're about one. We're about wanting everybody to know what's what's going on. It could be as little as, you know, just having a total report on neighbors. Activity in the different categories, you know, but I don't know if you want to look through fifty two categories and check marks, but we could do whatever you want.
It might be something that the police advisory committee could work with you on. I'm seeing several members here this evening. And so that would seem to me to be appropriate. You know, that way, that way, we're not nitpicking at at the different categories. It's what's relevant for you. To do your work and also a reflection of what's happening in the city. I would always. I would love to see a. A comparison by year of the numbers that you put together, but that's a whole other subject.
We have those through FBI. If you'd ever want to see those, and that's how I got those numbers from the airport. I just went to the FBI website. And I just called out how many. How many property crimes they had and then did the math and that's where I got the percentage from, but those numbers exist back to. Probably the nineties, maybe even further. I don't know.
So I'm just curious to see if we have any peaks and valleys and, you know.
Sure, we do. We're small. It's like a really good crime way to really probably, you know, unbalance us, but if a year over, year over, year over, year. We are stable. That's that's my opinion.
We're low, which is good. And my last thing, and it's only because it's stood out for me, is on one of your slides, you had an asterix by runaway. And I'm just wondering what that asterix was. It's under the neighbors group B offenses only collected if arrest made.
Right.
And there was just an asterisk by it and that just.
Yeah, it's hard to say what it was from. I took those numbers from. Either, I don't know where I got them, either from slides, from other presentations I've attended or such, and maybe there was an explanation at the bottom in the notes or something, but I didn't. It doesn't mean anything to me right now.
Okay, it's not important to just cover it.
And just so you know, a runaway is a status offense. It's not a criminal offense, so it doesn't really go into criminal reporting. That may be if there's a criminal case involved, some of the assisting a runaway. But we usually don't track runaways because those aren't criminal offenses. And then. Just if I may, Mayor. I would like to recognize Chris changing over records management systems. From researching them, getting proposals. Cities. Much larger than us with a lot more people to do it. Do it, you know, it takes them a lot longer and it's a lot more complicated and Chris really found a very economic vendor. Who's California based, who is very well thought of in the entire state. Executed all the reports. Worked with the vendor and is now finishing up training and will be implementing this soon, but I want to point out that. He's a one man show on this and we wouldn't have it if it wasn't for Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
I am the records manager. I'll have you now.
So Ms. Shirley, did you have another question?
Nope, I was just giving him a little round of applause.
Oh, oh, sorry. It's two hands, not just one.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go out to the public, see if anybody has any comments or questions. Giving everybody a chance to find their hand button. All right, I'm not seeing any, so we'll close public comment and come back and give Chris one more round of applause. Thank you. Nice job.
Thank you so much. And for everyone listening next month, I'm going to be doing, hopefully, if if the chief lets me in. We're going to be talking about the Racial Identity Profiling Act, how that's going to affect us when it goes into. Use the kind of questions that we're going to be required to report on. It's. This was. Okay, but that's going to be great. It's going to be a really good thing for the committee to look at as well. We're going to have a lot to talk about. So I want people. Hey, tell your friend, make it here next month, the city council meeting, we'll talk all about it.
Nice. It's very unfortunately, it's very important. So thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. It would anybody like to pull an item off the consent agenda?
I would, Ms. Mayor.
Okay.
C three, please.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, anybody from the public like to pull anything off the consent agenda? I'm not seeing any hands, so let's go back to Ms. Shirley. Can you? Explain what you'd like to discuss?
Sure. First, I just want to say I'm in total support of this. I know we haven't passed it yet, but I am very happy that we have this. I was curious how our ordinance differs from the state eviction or updated eviction ordinance. I'm wondering if Jeff, maybe can you explain that?
Absolutely. It basically mirrors the state ordinance. When when the. Pandemic first occurred, of course, I wasn't in this office and I wasn't here for the crafting of it. But several emergency orders came out. Discussion was underway for evictions. I think the city started to craft this prior to the state legislation coming out. State legislation came out. We adjusted, we made it mirror the state legislation at that point. It's, you know. Part of part of it is symbolic, of course, that the city supports this and the city is going to have its own ordinance. It went through a couple of iterations based on the timelines. Changing as COVID went farther and farther out. I was planning on bringing this to council. Last month, however, they. They didn't update. The extension and the ordinance would have lasted four days if we'd have done it. This month, they did finally update it. We're just updating it to. Reflect the the state's timeline and when their statute expires unless it's extended further. I would put this over to Alex for a little bit further information as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's my understanding as well that the the city jumped on this. At the beginning of COVID, when the emergency orders came out and the state sort of followed up. My understanding is that this this ordinance is drafted to to mirror what's going on with the state. So if that answers the question of council member Shirley, I have one quick little edit to the ordinance to share with council. Does that?
Can I? I just had a couple of other questions.
Oh, absolutely.
So Ian, this is section three C of the ordinance. This is the moratorium on residential evictions and in order to take advantage of it, it says that the. They the tenant is to pay the portion of rent that the tenant is able to pay. I'm wondering, how is that negotiated? How does a landlord and a tenant decide what they're able to pay?
Yeah, I don't know of any outside rule or regulation that that would control that. I think it would come down to to a private agreement between the two. I suppose if a landlord really objected otherwise, the unlawful detainer could proceed. And that would be a matter to be disputed in court, but I'm not aware of sort of a fixed percentage or something that the state has provided.
I feel like did the state, I don't know, I just did a quick research on this and it seems like they had twenty five percent listed as rent due. But I wasn't. I wasn't sure.
That that could very well be a Jeff. I don't know if you guys looked at that.
Not to that level of granularity. I think we we base this on other. You know. Codes that other cities, when we're doing research on it, and I think. That is just probably the cleanest way to do a good faith effort that both the tenant and landlord are working together. In in. That's, you know, there, there, there's the state law and then there's our municipal code and. Two avenues to address it if need be. And of course, some of this is symbolic because it does mirror a lot of those things. So. Depends on where we would take action, whether in the city or, you know, local level or state level.
Yeah, I would, if I might, through the mayor to further address council member Shirley's question. You know, it's sort of the 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 ordinance requires, you know, the the rent not being able to pay for COVID related issues. I think also too. There's not hard and fast rules around that as well, too. I sort of a tenant would assert that, but. To my mind, how that got hashed out or, you know, if a landlord wanted that proven up, I'm not sure. Exactly how that would play out outside of the unlawful detainer proceeding.
So I just also want to mention that when COVID hit, there was so much going on. That we felt it was really important to ensure that our renters had some protection. And so as we keep, and I think this is our third iteration. And so I wouldn't be surprised that somewhere along the line, a number was different or something like that, but I think it was. You know, our intent to make sure that our renters have protection at the city level, you know, that they can see that. It's a little more approachable than the state.
So yeah, so then that leads to my next point is how are we promoting this or how are we letting the? Our residents know that this exists for them? Like, I'd really like to see something like this in the kiosks. I so that our residents know that it's available to them.
Yes, council member Shirley, the mayor and I have already discussed this. Pad right behind me with a note to post this on our kiosk once it's passed and and make sure that copies are out there. So we already have plans in place to do that. And we'll probably do an update on the city's website as well.
Good, good, good. Okay, great. That's it.
Did you? So you're okay to go ahead and approve it as is?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just needed clarification.
Okay.
Believe Alex has one more point that he.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
If I could, through the mayor on finding L. As in Lima, the date at the end of that paragraph should should be June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Instead of November thirty, twenty twenty. I just caught that after I got the. The packet. So with that change, that's all I have.
Thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to include the change on item L.
Approve all the consent agenda items, including the one. C three.
Okay.
And I will second that as long as we're including the edits into that. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, Karen, can you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Gagliotti.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lindell.
Aye.
Mayor Kerr.
Aye. So it passes unanimously. Let's move on to new business. First one is item. A consider midyear budget adjustment recommendations. So I'll turn this over to acting city manager Ryan.
Thank you. If I can get my mouse to work so I can unmute myself. Mayor, council members. Thank you for letting us present this midyear budget adjustment recommendations to you. It has been a difficult year. Not only. Physically and mentally, but also financially. The city started the budget year making cuts and doing a very lean budget. So keep that in mind as we move forward. Some of these cuts are not as extensive as. We have done in the in the past when we prepared this budget, but we've keep in mind, we've already cut our budget back this year. So these are additional adjustments and part of those reasons are, well, most of the reasons are COVID related reductions in our line items. Because of some revenue. Shortfalls or deferments. Specifically within the cannabis sector. We. Are basing these budget adjustments on a worst case scenario. And just assuming that. Those deferrals in some of the cannabis taxes that have been going on for several months will not be in this budget. We don't project that they will be. So we want to make sure that we took a very conservative approach to the budget. And made sure that the city was in in the best financial shape it could be at the end of the fiscal year. I will turn this over to our contract accountant, Roberto Moreno. He assisted and did a lot of heavy lifting in this budget adjustment. I'd also like to thank the mayor and other members of the finance committee. For working with us. This, we look very hard at the budget and I'm pleased with the work that staff has done and pleased with Roberto helping us out at a very difficult time. Roberto.
Mayor Kerr, members of the council. This item was presented to the budget finance committee. Reviewed, made some comments. As a result of that, we have a couple of minor changes from what was originally presented to them. But basically, they recommended approval. You have the staff report in front of you, but I'd like to kind of review it. And because this is half the year has gone through. So now the numbers are looking a little bit different than they were way back in April twenty twenty when we started working on this. I'm going to go over an overview and then we'll get into as much detail as you would like. So I'm going to share my screen here. So this is the staff report. Hopefully, that's what you're seeing on the screen. Okay, good. So this is the staff report in the Word version, just a little bit easier to read than the PDF. So this, the the general fund, we're breaking this into the fund. So the general fund started out the year. Scheduled to have a surplus of two hundred and forty six thousand. Revenues over expenditures. As a result of some of the necessary changes, revenues are coming down. We're estimating a decrease of one hundred and sixty three thousand. To help offset that appropriations or the expenditures have been reduced by a hundred and four thousand. That's still a negative impact. So. What is now, what would be the amended budget if approved, would still have though a surplus of one hundred and eighty six thousand. As opposed to two hundred and forty six thousand. And we'll go into the detail on the general fund here in a minute as the report goes into that. The other funds that was affected is the gas tax fund. Originally, that fund is estimated to receive about thirty four thousand and that's still what we're expecting. But in order to ease the burden on the general fund, we're taking twenty five thousand of expenses that would. That are scheduled to come out of the general fund, but are legally able to come out of the gas tax fund. Basically, street related expenses. Causing the gas tax fund to end the year with a surplus, well, for the current year, a surplus of nine thousand dollars. In the gas tax fund. The coronavirus relief fund is a brand new fund for this fiscal year. There was no such thing when we started this budget. The state gave the city of Delray Oaks the minimum amount, which is fifty thousand dollars based on size. We're recommending that that fifty thousand be used to defray the expenses that were incurred in the general fund. To in response to COVID nineteen, one of the things that the state allows is. Just police response, police costs are considered. To be COVID nineteen related, just in general. So. We're going to take in fifty thousand, but we have received the fifty thousand. We're approaching it all. There would be no money left in the coronavirus relief fund at the end of this year. Because it would all be used. The. The other two funds affected are fora related. The fora habitat management fund. Both of these monies were received towards the end of the fiscal year in June, as far I was shutting down. So they were not even considered in the budget because the budget was already approved by then. And there is no money coming in because it's already here at June thirtieth. But seventeen thousand of this has been asked to be appropriated for the habitats management fund. Habitat management plan that the Nistefan Associates are working on. The other money that the city received was for the engineering. For the South Boundary Road and this one, this came out as a result of the finance committee meeting. Because I had overlooked this one that was mentioned, this contract that we have. So here, the money was received at June. At that point, it was not included in the budget. So now that five hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and sixty four is sitting there. The city does have a contractual obligation with Witten Engineering, which it assumed from Delray Oaks. So we need to appropriate the money to cover that contract. The city has that money in hand. So. There is, we're using it all up, but the money is there at June thirty to cover all of this. That's the big picture. So while some things are coming down overall, the general, everything still has a surplus. Or will be using up all the money for its designated purpose. Now, the. The reduction in revenues. That is noted here is. This is the general fund. You mentioned the general fund has a reduction of a hundred and sixty three thousand two hundred and forty dollars. These are the accounts that were affected by that. The biggest decrease, the reason for really looking at things hard is there's. A decrease of two hundred and eighty six thousand in cannabis tax revenue. So whereas the budget had five hundred and eighty thousand. We think we'll only have two hundred and ninety four thousand by the end of the year. And this is not lost revenue. It's just that one of the cannabis businesses took advantage of the deferral that the city offered. For COVID nineteen relief. for COVID-19 relief. And so they've deferred paying basically 286,000. And they won't be able to pay until the summertime. So it's, we're calling it a tax deferral. Ideally, it'll show up next year, but it will not be available this year to fund operations. That's the biggest decrease. As you can see, the decrease in total is only 163,000. Because of some additional revenues. All the other decreases are basically COVID-19 related. But the additional increases are these right here. We, we are getting the COP monies, there's an extra 56,000 has been made available to the city. This, it's one time. It only happens when there's additional funding from the state. So the city always gets 100,000. Got an extra 56,000. And then there's two grants. The Ambag REAP and LEAP grant that are both for the housing element. So those are grants that the city acquired. That helps with that cost. Unfortunately, that's offset by the expense of the housing element. That's what it's gonna be used for, to offset that. And then this 50,000 that we talked about, the coronavirus relief fund, we're looking to transfer it into the general fund. So with these additional sources of revenue, they help to offset not only the 286, but all these other little reductions that took place as a result of COVID-19. And there's a little bit more of an explanation on some of these here. If you want, we can pause you on the revenues and we can answer specific questions about these. Unless you want us to go through every single one of them?
I don't think so. If, if someone has a question, we can ask them later, but we were all at the meeting. Roberto, everything that we discussed at our earlier meeting is reflected here?
Yes. Like I said, the only difference is that we, we didn't talk about appropriating the 518,000. That's, that is for the Witten Engineering contracts.
Let's see if anyone has questions when you're done. And then we can move forward.
Okay, so that's the revenue side. On the expenditure side, the reduction is 104,000. We couldn't reduce the entire reduction in revenues, because we already started with a lean budget. There's only so much that could be reduced. The, and there was a few increases, though. The increases were, the main was, again, 130,000 for the housing element. But that's being paid for by the grant. 96,000 for the RGS agreement that the city entered into. Since Kim left, it left a big void, so RGS is filling that void. And that's basically being paid by some of the savings. Discuss here in a minute from those salary savings. The other major increase is 70,000 more in legal services. There's just been increased legal activity, Public Records Act requests, council is well aware of all of those sort of things. In order to fund for these increases, that we're decreasing some items. The biggest one is in the payroll section, 137,000 due to the savings of the city manager being gone for about four months. And then Kim, since she left, we forgot salary savings there. So that's helping to pay for that. And then we did transfer 25,000 for streets. Street sweep, I mean, 10,000 for street sweeping. And the other money for the street lighting, those are easily identifiable, street-related expenses that can properly be funded by gas tax. Nobody would ever question that. And then other items were adjusted, where they could be done within operating costs. The only other major reductions that we're able to do is in the capital projects. This Lurie Seal project was budgeted at 180. It was finished at 130, though. So there's a $40,000 savings in this Lurie Seal project. And the solar panels also, while they were budgeted at 80, had a $25,000 savings. So it, the net is 104,000 dollar reduction in the appropriations to be spent on, on operating the city. And there's a little bit of an explanation there. Here's a little explanation about the monies that came in from FORA. They said the city did receive 750,000 for the habitat management. And for this year, the NIST Duffian Associates anticipates it was be spending 17,000 to work on the housing manage, habitat management elements. And then the rest will be used later on. The other 518,000 came in for the design of South Boundary Road. In the agreement, the city agreed to use that to pay for the contract. And so that's why we're appropriating that 518,000 to pay for the Witten Engineering contract. This is the one that was not discussed at the Finance Committee meeting. So the main thing is for the general fund, it will now have a a, well, they'll still have a surplus, but it'll be only 186,000 at the end of the year, which is much better than a deficit. Any questions you have, we'd be more happy to answer those.
Great. Thank you, Roberto. Sorry, my screen isn't big. Ms. Lindell, do you have any questions, comments?
I don't, but I'd like to thank Alberto for a very complete report and for being with us tonight. Thank you, Alberto.
Mr. Gagliotti?
No, no questions.
Okay, Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, no questions. Great job, Roberto. Just a couple of comments. And I know that it's kind of hard for those participating in this meeting. You kind of look at all these numbers and your eyes glaze over a little bit. So it's, it's a little tough to kind of put it in perspective. And, and what I try to do here real quick is to offer you a little bit of perspective. This budget is kind of a good news, bad news story. It's good news in that we have a surplus. But it's bad news because we have less than what we had counted on before. And that's even when you consider the savings that we have with Kim and Dino's salary that we don't have to pay out. And also the grants that Roberto mentioned that we received. And those are one-time grants that we were able to bring in. And it's mainly because the revenue is down 163,000. And our sources of income in this city is kind of a blessing and a curse. It's a blessing, because it has had minimal impact for the past year during the COVID crisis. Because as we virtually have no reliance, or we receive virtually no income from tourist revenue. But it's a curse, because once the pandemic has passed, we're still in the same situation. And that situation is that we are heavily reliant on two things. Cannabis and Safeway. And just kind of put that in perspective for you. Roberto talked about one of our cannabis businesses struggling. And that has so far created a, a payment that a deferred tax payment of about 286,000. Now hopefully, we're, we're able to get that down the road and they're ultimately able to pay that. But you also add to that some revenue that we potentially expected by renting out the public works yard to them. And would have brought in about the same amount of revenue as the garden center. So you total that up and it comes out to about 320,000. And that's one cannabis business. And you equate that to the amount of money we bring in, in sales tax, which is about 365,000. Of which Safeway is the buy and far beyond is, is our biggest contributor to that. So the other thing that I look at, as I look at the city's budget, I kind of compare it to my own personal retirement account. Or anybody in on this meeting can think of it that way. If your retirement account relied on, was heavily weighted towards two sectors. And in this case cannabis and supermarkets. Or you can even break it down even farther. If your portfolio relied on one cannabis business and one supermarket, then I personally would be concerned. So I am a bit concerned as we move forward. And I just wanted to provide that perspective, because ultimately it shows that we need to diversify our revenue streams.
Sorry about that. Ms. Shirley?
Thank you. Roberto, I, I don't think I asked this at the other meeting. The gas tax fund, was there nothing in that budget when, at the beginning of this budget? Because it looked like it was 34,000 that was just available. And we happened to move street-related items to that budget, that line item. How come they weren't originally put there in the first place?
It's because of the way the city has been budgeting up to now. It's always been in total, all of the expenses. The city didn't have that many funds before. Gas, probably about gas tax was about the only other fund that it used to have for the longest time. And it was all put together as one item. At the end of the year, the auditors came in and they moved a few numbers around in order to report what was gas tax-related, but it was not in the budget per se. So we'd like to start doing more fund reporting. So as you can see, there's a gas tax fund, coronavirus. Each of these funds, they all have separate purposes. So it's not that the city has one big pot of money, because it, it does, but a lot of that is restricted. You can only, council itself only has authority over the general fund, basically. So that's why we're gonna, going forward, we're trying to push the use of the gas tax monies differently.
Okay, good. I appreciate that. And then just for clarification, since we didn't talk about this at the last meeting, the South Boundary 518,000 that were, is allocated, that's to Witten Engineering. That is to get to that 30% design. Is that what that's for? For the realignment?
Full amount.
No, this, the 518 is the amount of the contract that the city assumed from FORA. FORA gave you the contract, the city assumed it, and FORA gave you the money to pay for that contract. So this is the engineering, the design, the original design.
For 100%, for 100% of it? Okay.
If I may, Councilmember Shirley. Is for the engineering contract on the road portion of the design. It's for the full engineering design of the roadway portion. There's separate portions for the intersection. And they, they have specific funds that they have to be drawn out of. But when the road design from way down towards Laguna Seca up to the intersection is designed, that's, that's the amount of money that we, we've received from FORA for that particular engineering.
Okay, because don't we have a? 100%.
100% as long as we don't expend additional.
Because haven't we spent a portion of that already for a portion of the design? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I couldn't, we've, we've spent for both the intersection and, and the roadway, and I don't have those exact numbers right now.
Okay, I just, thank you. That's it.
Okay, so kind of tacking on to what's been said earlier. I want to thank Roberto and Acting City Manager Hoyn. We, I keep pushing for more and more and more granularity in the budget. Because I want to know exactly how things, you know, are divvied up. And so as that's happening, you know, there's more things that we realize we don't need or we do need and things like that. So I really, we have come so far in the level of detail in these. And I personally really appreciate it. It gives me a much clearer picture of our situation. To address some of Mr. Donaldson's concerns, I'll talk a little bit more in my remarks. There, there may be significant funding to help offset COVID losses. Including the sales tax and things like that, not only for this year, but for multiple years. So that's a one-time thing, I realize. That there's a perception that we rely on, on businesses, but we rely on all of our businesses. You know, I know that Mr. Mori brings in approximately 140 in sales tax a year. So all of our businesses are, are critical. On that, I did a whole lot of work prior to the to the Finance Committee. And again, I also want to thank all the council for participating for the first time ever, as far as I know. So it was nice to have everybody there. It's, I find it very helpful to have a pre-meeting, especially about budget and with these levels of nuances. And now we can have a much higher conversation about way forward. And I just want to remind everybody, this is a budget. There is fluidity, right? We would have never anticipated this year, last year, when we were, we were trying to plan. So I think we're in amazing situation, considering we have any leftover. And, and of course, it's tied to some of those other uncertainties that we've experienced this year. So on that note, I, there's another topic we're gonna be talking about in a little while. And when we go to approve this, maybe I'll bring it up after public comment. I just want to move a little chunk back in, because we have so much leftover. But why don't we go out to the public and see if anybody has any comments? I see Dennis Alley on.
Okay. What just happened here? Oh, that's my timer. Okay, I'm sorry. In, in the budget, is there, was there any thing to address the the debt to what used to be what Infantino? There's nothing to address that. Okay.
No.
All right, and I don't remember now, the balance sheet. What is the total amount that's still owed to Mr. Infantino? Does anybody have that number?
I don't know the most recent. I, I keep just, you know, moving up $100,000. Roberto, do you have any idea?
If you give me a minute, I can look it up. Do you have other questions here?
Go ahead, let somebody else ask a question and we'll wait for Roberto's respect.
Was that it, Dennis? That was your last question?
Yeah, that's it. I just want to know what we're, what's the plan to address that debt?
So to, to just offer a little bit on that. We are looking at possibilities in the strategic plan. So, I mean, obviously, we're very limited this year. And next year, we don't know with a new city manager or, you know, all of that. I, we don't have an answer right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, so Dennis, if you don't mind, while Roberto's working on that, let's come back to the council. And I just wanted to ask, request that we keep, you know, 10 to 15K in the contractual HR line item to assist us as we move forward with the hiring process for the city manager. Just to make sure that something's there in case. I'd like, I'll, I'll talk a little later about the process. One idea for a process, but it might include the HR folks over there as a subject matter expert and, and to help assist us with this process. So I'll open it up to any other council members if you have any other comments or... John?
Yeah, I mean, this is just an allocation, but it doesn't necessarily, you have, it doesn't guarantee us that we have to spend it. Is that correct? And it's just a general fund allocation. We're not actually going to be putting it into a fund that, that locks us into an HR spending? Okay, then, then I support that.
Okay. Mr. Donaldson, Ms. Lindell, Ms. Shirley, any?
Yeah, I support that as well. I think it's a, it's a smart idea.
So.
Yeah, I, I support it as well.
Okay. So why don't we go ahead and vote on that? The information that we're waiting for from Roberto doesn't affect what we're talking about now. So what we need to do is approve the modifications as Roberto and Acting City Manager Hoyn have presented. With, why don't I just do it? So I move that we approve the mid-year budget adjustments with the addition of $15,000 to the contractual HR line.
I'll second.
Okay. Karen, could you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Also, member Gagliotti?
Hi.
Council member Shirley?
Hi.
Council member Donaldson?
Hi.
Vice mayor Lintel?
Hi.
Mayor Kerr?
Hi. So the budget adjustments pass unanimously. Um if you're okay, Roberto?
Yep. Okay. So if I made, so the the question was how much is owed? Uh the total is one point two million dollars, but it's broken up into two amounts. Five hundred thousand of that is non-interest bearing, doesn't bear any interest. The other seven hundred thousand. Is interest bearing at five percent compounded annually. So it's a total of one point two million.
Roberto, last time um we looked at this in depth, I think we were at approximately one point four. Because of that interest-bearing portion. Uh and and so what I'm hearing is, is you don't have those numbers.
Okay, no, so. Um one point two was the original notes. So what it is at June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Uh the entire amount is one point four, one one million four hundred and forty one thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars. That includes the interest.
And that was as of June, so the end of last fiscal year?
Yeah, last fiscal year.
Okay.
Uh so right, yeah, as of last fiscal year. I can give you the number that it will be at the end of this fiscal year if you want.
That would be great. I think that will answer.
So uh at June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, it'll be one million four hundred and eighty nine thousand. And seventy five, and seventy five dollars.
Okay. Dennis, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And it uh just highlights again to me that we've got to have a plan. And I know the restriction is that we. We can't start paying off the interest-bearing portion until we pay off the five hundred thousand first, the non-interest-bearing. So I would hope that when you, you you talk about a plan to move forward. We need to address that as soon as possible. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you. Okay, so let's move on to new business item number B. Consider request from Monterey Peninsula Parks, excuse me, Parks District to form an ad hoc committee. To explore options regarding certain Delray Oaks parcels as they relate to the Parks District's properties. Wow, that's a mouthful. Um before I turn this over to um acting city manager Hoin, I just want to reiterate, I had a. I had a phone call this afternoon saying, oh my God, are you doing something with the Frog Pond? I just want to reiterate to everybody, we're not talking about the Frog Pond. And um uh acting city manager will will uh kind of go into the details about what we're trying to do.
Mayor, thank you, council members and all the guests who are here tonight, our residents and and friends. This. Um recommendation from staff is for the city council to consider and approve uh joining an ad hoc committee. Uh with two council members and two park district uh board members. To discuss how certain Delray Oaks parcels uh relate to the future of the park district here. As our neighbor and uh to discuss those possibilities. Um the mayor, several months ago, when I first came into this office, set up an introductory meeting with Rafael Payan, the. Uh executive director of the Parks District and myself and the mayor. And we were discussing a myriad of things from being good neighbors to four properties being turned over to the city and also to the park district. And how those neighbors uh were uh or how those uh parcels were joined. And just started talking about the future of our parks and the future of Delray Oaks, in the future of uh the. The idea of having a a uh signature park in Delray Oaks and what what an idea that the Parks District had is to. To maybe have a signature park in each district and just some concepts of where the Park District were moving forward. And the subject of their land uh. That neighbored the the city's land uh came up. And we started discussing things about uh maybe. Starting a dialogue, and this is what this is, is starting a dialogue with the Parks Districts to see if any of our properties or parcels. Uh would would be included in some of these parks and how we would like to see that and starting to get feedback from electeds in residents. Um basically, when I uh spoke with uh the director, uh I I framed this from the city's perspective. That um. You know, this is a good venue to start the conversation and to garner ideas. And there's no specific. Uh plan, there's no specific offer, there's nothing that's on the board. Uh this is just kind of the starting point to see how perhaps we can work together for the benefit of the city. The benefit of the Parks Districts and and people who visit, visit our city. Um and there is interest in. Uh protecting lots of our properties in the city and mitigating for any future development. And all these ideas are on the table. You know, I'll give you an example, our our beloved seventeen acres, uh there's undevelopable land there, there's some developable land there. How does that play into neighboring park district properties and and can we be good partners, like I said, for the benefit of the city? And the park district. So staff's recommendation is to approve the ad hoc committee and start the conversation. And see if there's something unique and beautiful that that benefits our city and benefits the park district and and. Really uh increases the quality of life for our residents uh when it comes down to the bottom line. And in and have a premier destination for our residents to enjoy. Mayor?
Great. Thanks, Ms. Lintel.
Yes, I'd like to know if uh if we vote on this and we approve setting up an ad hoc committee. Are we tonight um appointing people from the council, two people from the council? We're appointing them tonight. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Jeff, I nodded my head.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, absolutely. It's, you know, this is, you know, of course, it is wide open. Council can take a different direction if they, if they want. But you know, the hope is, is that we can, you know, and staff's recommendation is we do appoint a couple of members to uh start that conversation.
So before, before I go uh to questions to everybody, I just wanted to let you know that um. Dino and I began these conversations with Rafael Payan, who is the executive director of the regional Parks District. Two and a half years ago. And um there's great interest in um. A, working together, making sure, seeing where the interests blend. We, of course, uh want, it's the the two pieces of property that the Parks District recently received. Was the one right on the corner of um Gen Jim and South Boundary. On the south corner and then a little sliver directly next to it. And um so it's Frog Pond two, and I don't know if there's a a name for the third little sliver. Um and so we've just been talking about um what they're hoping to do with that. We, of course, would love to have. Formal trails. Um and as we're talking about uh the South Boundary Road, how does that play into? Perhaps a parking space for hikers up there, a trailhead, uh things like that. And so after these several conversations, it's it then moved from the three of us to actually meeting with some of the um. Parks District uh uh I don't know what they're called, directors. Um to look at the other parcels and maybe their interest in um purchasing. Or somehow we partner together on this trail system through the seventeen acres and or the other parcel that is Delray Oaks. It as as you continue down South Boundary. So I just wanted to give you a little more context too before um. You know, we start having conversations about it.
And and Mayor, I'd forgotten, I might point out that it also talks on how this relates to Fortag and the trail system coming through. Uh both at the Frog Pond and and other places and and start the conversation now so that we have a really good, solid plan moving forward.
And as Fortag comes through, you know, what else is it going to affect? And how do we, you know, come together beforehand to make sure that we're uh on top of those partnerships? And figuring out what it is that we actually want with that area, not only for ourselves, for the parks and how and if we partner together. So uh Ms. Lintel, did you have any additional questions or?
No, I'm I'm fine uh until we come to the appointment of the committee.
Okay. Uh Mr. Gagliotti? No questions? Okay. Uh Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with ad hoc committees. I mean, we've had them before with the airport, for example. Um but I'm wondering if the planning commission is not the better route to take with this. I mean, I say that because the Parks District can come to the planning commission and brief whatever concept they have. Or kind of lay out an idea of what they would like to do. And it allows members of the public to be there. It has that transparency that's built into it. And I think the planning commission is more than capable of doing something like that. Matter of fact, you know, the majority of the things that the planning commission does is architectural review. And I think they're much more capable and we have much more capable individuals within that commission that could handle something like this. And I think it would be a great venue for it.
Okay. Ms. Shirley?
Um I am certainly in support of this ad hoc committee and um I I certainly want to propose that. Mayor, you are one of those members since you've been involved in these meetings from the very beginning. Uh the Frog Pond is a jewel in Delray Oaks. And I know we adore the Frog Pond. And if we can only increase. Uh the amount of open space and accessibility for our residents, I think we would be so lucky. So um and since we are in, it would be uh it it would be a form of communication. Cause we'd be talking about negotiations in terms of land and um potential sales of land. It seems like it would be appropriate that it would go through the council. Um and so it seems that. I, you know, it seems appropriate. And I I would be happy to be on that uh committee as well. I I have a, you know, a strong interest in partnering with the Park District. Um as you all know, my husband is a director there and uh he he stepped away from this committee purposely. So that I would have a, you know, a potential for being on this if um if we so chose. Um but I I'm excited about working with them. I think they could really enhance something that we have within our city, so. That's it for me. Thanks.
Um so I do, and I also want to uh tag on what Kim was talking about. That um and we double-checked that uh her husband's uh. Uh district is not that area. So there's no conflict of interest, you know, um on that. Um I want to respond to the idea, the planning commission, I like that idea. I think there um. There is the possibility of negotiating for some land. And I think it needs to go through the council first. And then whatever um. Ideas come together for trails or building, you know, a a bathroom hopefully. Or a parking lot or something. And and the trails, that would make total sense to go through the planning commission. And I hadn't even thought about that, so thank you. Um so uh. Yeah, I would, I would actually love to continue the work that um I've been doing for the last couple of years on this. So on that, what I'd like to do is go out to the public and um get their thoughts. Oh, I did, one other point I just wanted to also address is this committee would not be making decisions. They would be having conversations about options that would come to the council for a decision from the full council. I just wanted to make sure that that was really clear. Um so on that, let's go out to the public. Any? Uh Jim Clark? Jim, you're muted?
Okay, I haven't done this from my iPhone before, so I just got there.
Okay.
Hi. So uh Ms. Kerr, council members. Um well, I greatly appreciate council person Shirley's um honesty and integrity. Um I do think that um from what I've heard about A, B, one, two, three, four, it's extremely important. That you avoid any appearance of conflict of interest. And her husband being um a director of the Parks Committee. I think would be bad, uh what do they call that? Bad optic optics uh for the city. So I just recommend that whoever goes on that city, as much as I trust uh councilwoman Shirley. Uh individually, I just think it would be very bad optics for her to be a part of this particular ad hoc committee. Thank you.
Gotcha, thanks. Um I think I saw Scott Waltz, yeah, Scott.
I I couldn't find my raise hand function.
Okay.
So on behalf of Fortag, I would note that um I think we're in support of uh this committee and the larger effort. That inter-agency planning can be cha- can be challenging. And any effort to have conversations where agencies compare agendas and desires and goals. And and try to negotiate the benefit of both, um I think is really smart. Um I I think that uh having a preliminary conversation to sort that out is a good way to then uh move things forward on behalf of both agencies. Um as uh the mayor mentioned, including sending it to the planning commission would would uh certainly be appropriate. So um uh I believe the city manager mentioned this, but I'll just point out that um Fortag would trace. Under General Jim Moore and then follow the waterway along the northern bank, um just below South Boundary Road. So it's an exciting prospect to think about regional parks and Delray Oaks working hand in hand to firm up plans. For what's possible there um as Fortag comes through. And also timely because um we are building phase one. And it would be appropriate then to get things in order to consider adding to the benefits of Fortag for Delray Oaks to build the second part. The last thing I would say is a citizen of the Oaks is that um part of the the beauty of my tiny apartment condo. Is that there's a bank of windows and that the green view across the way, not quite Frog Pond, uh but I think Frog Pond two. Um is my fourth wall. Um so I hope that there's a very good conversation about um not just what can be done with that land. But it's it's larger implications and uses, um especially for folks like me in the Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Want to give everybody a minute to raise their hand? Uh Mr. Watson? Pat, I'll get you when we come back to council.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you, uh Madam Mayor. Looks like my face is not on, not on my picture, but there's a nice picture there, so that's okay. Um I just wanted to point out that I I think the purpose here is is to have that inter-agency conversation. And the ad hoc committee with members, two members from each of the two organizations serves that purpose. Um if the discussion was only within the planning commission, then um you wouldn't have both agencies. Um you know, equally in the discussion. And so um. Like the the planning commission idea sounded interesting, but I think it was, didn't seem to me to be the 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 intent of the offer. Um from uh Director Payan to to start a conversation. The um the the city of Delray Oaks and the Park District have been geographically interwoven. Uh for fifty years. Um you know, the the city's, one of the city's most loved parks is actually a park district property. Um and the Park District has recently acquired more property. So I think it makes a lot of sense in the co-management of this interwoven landscape. Of the Park District and the city to to have um a conversation with uh participation by both organizations. And when Scott and I started talking to both organizations six or seven years ago. It was evident to us that there had not been a whole lot of conversation between the city and the Park District. I think there's been a lot more sense and that's been a really good thing. And and this ad hoc committee would would move that forward a little. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Dr. Askoff?
Hi there, hopefully you can see me okay. Um I just wanted to make a quick comment uh regarding uh Mr. Clark's sort of optics uh commentary. Just to point out that uh as was stated, um this area in question over on the four-door properties is not within my ward. Um and I did step down from consideration for being on the Park District side of the conversation. And so just as. Your group is considering setting up this process, um where a small. um, where a small group then brings it to the full council, we, we have essentially the, the exact same thing happening on our side. So I will, I will not be party to any of the conversations before it comes to the full public meeting, just as it would be uh, on your side. So um, I also double-checked with our legal counsel to make sure there was no weirdness or issues there um, with uh, and, and it turns out legally, there'd be no issue whatsoever, even if we were both on the, on the committees from the two sides, uh, interestingly enough. Uh, but evidently there's very strong legal precedent for spouses not to preclude others from volunteering on, on committees uh, based upon what, what they're representing. So all that being said, um, I'm bowed out from all that stuff and will not be party to any of the uh, discussions from the Park District side of the spectrum. So hopefully uh, my lack of participation on it from the Park District side doesn't uh, preclude um, people from giving uh, Ms. Shirley a, a chance of, of being on the committee as well. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment before we come back to the council? Give me a second. Uh, okay, so I'm going to come back to the council. Ms. Lindtow.
Yes, I have a couple of issues. One, um, since the possibility of Fortag entering into this, I wonder if they, they should have a representative on the ad hoc committee. That's a question, uh, whether that might, you know, make some difference in, in their plans or our plans. And the other is, um, I liked um, Scott's uh, idea of planning commission being involved. And um, I'm recommending that we have uh, John Gagliotti and Scott Donaldson as our ad hoc committee, since they both have planning commission experience of many years. And um, so I, I would like to see them uh, so they have the combination of the, of the um, planning commission as well as the city council. And I think that they would be um, good representatives for this ad hoc committee. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Gagliotti.
Um, first of all, I want, I want to thank Pat for uh, for volunteering me for that. Um, but I'd like to respectfully uh, de, um, decline, decline that appointment. Uh, I'm, I'm pretty busy right now uh, with what I'm doing privately. Um, but uh, I do like the idea of having at least one, like Scott, I think, I think Scott would be nice. And, and potentially the mayor and Scott or, or Kim, Kim and Scott. I, I do like having that kind of planning, planning experience. I think that that planning experience and city council experience, um, I think is a, is a good mix. Um, so while I wouldn't appreciate the position or, or I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to take the position. I, I would uh, kind of can, I would agree with uh, with having at least one of our prior planning commissioners on this, uh, this committee.
Great. Uh, Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, I would support an ad, ad hoc committee as long as the next step after that would be to the planning commission. I just think that's prudent. It makes a lot of sense. And I, I would love to be on, on the ad hoc committee. And not only because of the reasons that were just stated, but I believe I probably have the best understanding of 17 acres and the complexities that are involved with that piece of property. And I think I could add a lot to that ad, ad hoc committee. In addition, I've spoken with Scott Walz and Fred Watson at length about the integration of Fortag through that particular area. So I think I could add a lot to it. I believe that both the mayor and I would be good representatives on that committee. And you know, that's, that's what I would hope for.
Okay, Ms. Shirley.
Uh, I obviously support you, Mayor Kerr, for this uh, committee. Uh, I would also like to be on the committee just because of uh, you know, my background in sustainable Delray Oaks. I mean, this fits right into what we're trying to do within the city is uh, creating great spaces and sustainable spaces for our city. Um, uh, Councilman Donaldson, I, I am a little concerned because you are a person who has actually proposed a project for some of this land that is going to be in uh, discussion. And so I don't, you know, that there's some bias there, I think, going in. Maybe you can speak to that and relieve my um, my nervousness about that. So if you can share, you, I mean, you have prior ideas for that land. And so I, I, I guess I'm a little concerned about you being on the committee, going in with sort of your sort of preconceived maybe ideas for the land.
Yeah, absolutely. No bias. I mean, that project uh, over a year ago uh, was not considered by council. It, it's essentially dead. Um, but through that process, like I said, I gained a lot of knowledge about that property. And I want to use that knowledge to help out the committee, to help maybe, you know, do something that's mutually beneficial for both parties. And there's no question I can do that in an unbiased way. I, you know, there's, there's no future plans for, you know, for that property as it relates to me. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, any proposal that I sent forward is, was dead. It's done.
Okay, I, I just feel like there's some land there that is, um, we can, the city could certainly use for mitigation purposes for other areas in the city. Um, I think there's some value there certainly in starting to, to pay off our, our debt as well. And so I want to make sure that we, um, you know, we're, we're good partners with, with the Park District, that, that we're also obviously keeping the city in mind for what we, what could use that for.
So I wanted, uh, Mr. Gagliotti.
Yeah, I just wanted to maybe, I mean, hopefully allay some of uh, Councilmember Shirley's concerns. I mean, there's no offer of development on the table. This is an absolute uh, sitting down and, and discussing with the Park District how they might uh, they might acquire it. I mean, so, so there's no, there's no private developer here. And I, and I think that Scott would be pretty well-versed in, you know, in that. And so, and, and as long as there's no, I guess, no, you know, no commercial, commercialization of it, um, I think everyone should be pretty, pretty safe in that. So.
The other, the other thing um, that I would support, that I would highly encourage is again, that whoever is on this ad hoc committee comes back with options. Not one option, right? Um, because this is the deciding committee, not the ad hoc. So I just want to make sure that that's, that, that is my um, kind of caveat for this. Yes, Ms. Lindtow.
How, how does everyone feel having a Fortag um, representative? Not for any decision-making within, but, but for informational purposes?
My only concern with that is this was a request from the Parks District to us for two of our council members to meet with two of their directors. I think that's a great idea. And perhaps whoever the two are could propose that to the ad hoc committee. Or we, you know, I, I, I don't know. But it, it, it isn't really our decision to go to them and say, we'd like to have this too, at this point.
Okay, well, then I, I would recommend that one of the members be Scott Donaldson. And then the other would be the, uh, you, the mayor, uh, the two members.
Is that a motion?
Uh, I'll second that if that's a motion.
That's a motion.
Okay.
Then I'll second that.
Okay, um, Karen, could you do a roll call though, please?
Uh, before we do that, Mayor, can we also add to the, to the motion, the stipulation that it'll first go to the planning commission before it comes back to the council?
I disagree with that.
Yeah, yeah, through the mayor, this is just, this is just a, um, this is just an appointment. Um, and then the governance, I guess, we, maybe we should, we should agendize that and, and discuss that, kind of the, the scoping and, and what we kind of, what, what the expectations of this committee is. Because I've just heard kind of three things that in, in the last discussion that the committee could do. So, so why don't we just kind of contain this to be uh, an appointment? And then let's, let's further the discussion maybe at a later time on kind of what the governance or what the scope of, of the committee is going to be.
I agree.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm good with that.
Yeah, I think, I think the planning commission is a great idea at the right time, based on whatever the ad hoc committee comes up with, right? If we're moving forward on some kind of project, then definitely it goes to, um, it seems to me that it would come back to the council for approval. And then it'll go to the planning commission for um, the uh, you know, moving through the, the motions to get whatever it is accomplished.
Mayor, if, if I might, through the mayor, I, I agree with those comments. The, the action before you is the appointment to, to the, to the committee. Um, we don't know what the outcome of those discussions are going to be. So it would seem that the planning commission distinction and, and that um, would be a bit premature. Certainly the, the planning commission would, in its role of reviewing projects, if that was the outcome of, of the committee meetings, they would, they would do so. Um, but uh, you know, the action before you is to appoint the committee members. And at this point, I don't think we know quite enough yet to uh, further direct it. Just uh, just not so much a, a legal point, but just sort of mechanically how you, how you go through this, just a thought.
Thank you for the clarity. Uh, Mr. Donaldson, are you okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely. No worries. Let's, let's go forward with the vote.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Karen, please.
Councilmember Gagliotti.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lindtow.
Aye.
Mayor Kerr.
Aye. So it passes unanimously. Um, and so uh, Acting City Manager, can you let them know and then we'll figure out when we meet?
Uh, Mayor, absolutely. Uh, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So let's move on to the next item to add a little more uh, similarity, but a little more confusion. So I was approached by um, Tom Moore, who is the vice chair for the Marina Coast Water District, wanting to know be, we have no representation with them, although we have a uh, water agreement with them for Fordor, for our Fordor property. So he reached out with the idea, wanting to know what we thought about doing another ad hoc committee with um, two folks on the Marina Coast District to discuss um, whatever it is we want to discuss. The options, this is not the same thing where they came to us and wanted a specific um, item. What they want is they want a discussion amongst us if we want this. If uh, how often we would want this. And would we want this um, just Delray Oaks, the two folks with the Marina Coast two folks? Or with all of the other jurisdictions that Marina Coast Water District um, represents? And so this is really just a conversation about if we're interested and kind of who might be interested and in what form might we be interested in. I mean, we'll vote. I'll take it back to Tom. He's also dealing with um, the other jurisdictions. But he wanted me to get, get a gauge from you on um, how you might want to move forward with having formal um, dialogue with them. So let's go to Ms. Lindtow.
Um, yeah, I, I think it's uh, probably a good idea to form a committee uh, with representation from both sides. I, I guess I also think uh, that this has to do a lot with our Fordor development.
Of course. Well, it, it's actually has to do with uh, South Boundary.
Yeah.
Right.
Which is Fordor development.
Well, South Boundary Road.
So I, I think it would be good to have a um, a, form a, form a committee to discuss it with them.
Okay, uh, Mr. Gagliotti.
Yeah, similar to the last discussion is it, I, first of all, I agree. I think this is a great idea. And, and uh, it's my preference that we get them, we just get them without all the other jurisdictions. It's just Delray Oaks and them. And for, for the reason that you just pointed out is that of all of the water purchase or water conveyance um, agreements that Fordor had signed, we are the only district that is not being um, yeah, or, or not only represented on their board, but we, we chose, well, and, and I think smartly, chose not to be annexed uh, into them because we wouldn't have any really voting, any real voting power uh, to begin with. So, so I think this is a great kind of uh, alternative uh, to basically get their ears. That's great. Um, but with regard to scope, I mean, just like we had in the last discussion, I mean, we, do we, do we know what the scope is going to be? I, I, I agree that South Boundary, the South Boundary return water conveyance infrastructure needs to go in. I know that that's, that's an important part of it. But um, but again, they, there are discussions on the, you know, on, on water allotments and, and, and how that's all going to kind of get worked out. And uh, and what a, a will-serv letter will look for, for whomever comes, you know, uh, whatever developer eventually uh, is out there. So, so I think that this is, it's a critical, uh, it's a critical um, committee for us to have. Um, and then also my concern is, is that, are we making appointments tonight? Are we going to kind of kick that one down the road a little bit? Okay, great. We're just talking about the concept.
Yeah, Tom, uh, Mr. Director Moore just kind of wanted an idea of what we're all thinking, you know? Um, and his concern was if we came up and said, we want um, two meetings a year all by my, all by ourselves, then what that means is they have 10 meetings, right? Because they're meeting with all the other jurisdictions. So he's just trying to, you know, fit all the spaghetti in a bowl.
Yeah, yeah. Um, well, so then what, what my input on this would be is in response back to Mr. Director Moore is uh, yes, we would like to do that. And we would like it for us to be just us with them because with, I think we're a special case. I think of us as special, you know, we're, we're special. We, we all know we're special, but, but in their eyes, they need to know how special we are.
And um, his, his want, the idea he threw out was to have two meetings a year.
I think that's fine. I think, I think for right now, that's certainly there, that's, there's not that much to talk about with them. So.
And uh, I want to go back to Ms. Lindtow. Would you be okay with twice a year?
Yes, that, that would be fine.
Okay, and just Delray Oaks?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Let's move on to Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, I agree for all the reasons that Councilmember Gagliotti just stated. And uh, Mayor, for you, so when you were approached by Mr. Moore, is this something that he has done with the other cities that he, you know, that Marina Coast provides water for?
Uh, that's what he indicated because he was concerned about how many individual meetings they would be having.
Okay, because I, I was thinking, is this something that he approached you because he doesn't have it with the other cities and wished that he had formed a committee? Or that he has done committees and found them beneficial?
Um, I think he's trying to figure out next steps. Obviously, they have a, a, a solid relationship with the city of Marina. And he's trying to figure out if, if, how beneficial, how to make this the most beneficial for us as possible.
Okay.
Are you okay with the ad hoc committee?
Yeah, absolutely. Like I said before, I, I support it for all the reasons that were, were just stated.
And are you okay with twice a year?
Yes.
And are you okay, would you prefer just us alone?
Absolutely.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Donaldson? No, okay. Ms. Shirley.
Yeah, I'm in support of this. I think anytime you can have extra communication with um, our partners, then I think it's, it's valuable. And I'm okay with it being just us. Two times a year sounds good to me. I, you know, they, they've got skin in the game with us and, and we need them. And so this is a partnership that we need to, to massage and make sure it goes well. And so I think it's, it's valuable.
Great. Okay, so what I'll do, and I, you know, whatever everybody wants, it sounds like we're all in agreement. I'll go back to him. I'll let him know our ideas. Um, and then I'll let you know if and when he comes back with whatever his uh, board decides. And then, and then we'll go, then we'll move forward with what that means for us and voting on who it is and stuff like that. So thank you for walking through that with me and um, I'm looking forward to that. Okay, the next item is uh, D, consider selection process for new city manager. All right, so I came up with, I had um, conversations with several people that do hiring at universities. Um, as well as uh, I had talked with the city of Salinas and the city of Seaside. And what I came up with is kind of an outline that I just want to throw out there. It's um, and, and I want to hear from Alex. I want to hear from you guys. Who wants to be involved? How we want to do? It's and and I want to hear from Alex, I want to hear from you guys, who wants to be involved, how we want to do this. But I'm looking forward to a thorough professional job that we do to make sure that we get the best person possible. So Randy, if you could pop up the document. And what Randy will do is as I go through and as we have the conversation, he can go in and edit and add things. So we can see it live. So without further ado, so the first thing I'm, and this is all just a suggestion. To to kick off the conversation. So number one, to get a hiring committee, which could be two council members. One staff person, one PD, three residents, one from the Oaks, one from the South, one from the North. And one business representative. So all of the stakeholders are represented. And then for observation and professional advice, I think we need to have our legal counsel. And that now this is tying back to the fifteen thousand dollars. Have an HR rep come as a subject matter expert to make sure we're a lot, we're. We're just doing the best practice. And then that hiring committee, we we could go out for interest for those those folks. And we could come up with who the two are on the council that would do that. And then they would meet, and I just threw some dates together, just trying to give everybody kind of a. An idea of the timeline or a timeline. The hiring committee would meet to Karen sent out the job description and the advertisement to everyone. And so their first meeting would be just to update that and shape it with any priorities that may be different or new. They would create a rubric with five or six criteria for evaluating the applications that come in. Right? So everyone would go through, look at them and say, you know, this person is, you know. We shouldn't even consider for one reason or another, or this person goes into the definite interview box. And then they would also develop the interview questions and grading. And that could all be done within a couple of weeks. And then the advertisements would be posted and the job description could go on the city website. That way, that helps us with cost for the various online sites. The ICMA site and. I'm forgetting the other site. And those applications would then be sent to our HR rep for first review. And they would have a four week collection period, right? So everyone would have notice and then they would be due approximately April seventeenth, give or take. Based on how quickly we can get the previous items done. And then the next item would be after that month, those applications would go to the hiring committee. To review based on their rubric. I I can't come up with an example right now, but that would give us a written kind of detail about. You know, the checkboxes that are hit and some that aren't, not necessarily that that would mean they would be bumped off. But it would just give us a. A a graph of, you know, for comparison. The next thing would be to the hiring committee would meet to discuss the rubrics and identify who to interview. And then the HR representative would contact those and set up interviews. Where the interview questions and the grading on those questions, so Ms. Lindell mentioned the last time she did this, she had her two questions. And so whoever would be on the committee would have their two questions similarly. And then the hiring committee would meet after interviewing them and select the top three. They would report or prepare a report with recommendations for the council. And then the HR person would can contact the top three people to schedule a public presentation. So similarly to MPS does this. The top three people have an hour, they come and they present and they get questions from the public. That would give our public and our business owners an opportunity to see the various candidates. And then the council would do a final interview of those three. This would be the first time the full in, the full council would be a part of. We would do a full interview with all three. And then we would go into closed session the end of June to make the final decision. And then the HR person would notify the finalist and the other two and they could start at the middle of July. So this is just a kickoff to see what you guys think. It aligns with several folks I I've talked to and so let's go out for questions. John, let me go to Ms. Lindell first, if you don't mind.
Okay, I'd like to hear what John has to say first.
Okay. Mr. Gagliotti.
Yeah, one, I mean, Mayor, a lot of work has gone into this and and I I mean, it's appreciated. I do have a question about the the committee, the committee is going to have selection powers. So the committee actually will be able to to wean or weed out or, I mean, they'll be actually select and reduce the reduce. The number of candidates that are presented to the to the council?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's that's something that I would not, I mean, there may be, there may be.
You just want mute.
So that's something that I I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want the selection committee to presuppose or predispose. I mean, I want, I want, that's basically, that is, that is the 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 committee's power, not the committees, but the the council's. You know, power is that is they can see the candidates. So I so I don't necessarily agree with the the committee's power to basically select. I think that they definitely can do the evaluation, rack and stack, and then bring that recommendation. That's that's generally the way other committees work in other boards. But for them to actually do pre-selection of the of the full body of the board, I think that that's kind of, that that's a, that's a little overreaching. And then the the voting, I noticed that we have was eight members, how is voting, you know? Is it eight? Yeah, so so how would voting, yeah, how would we break a tie there?
I don't think it's voting, I think it's based on the graphs. Right? The the averages from the, so each person gets two questions. And then they would have a one to five, right? One, you know, they knocked it out of the park, zero or five, you know, what are they thinking? And so, so for example, I had Pat in my mind, right? So she has her two questions and she judges, you know, the the three of them or the ten of them or the forty of them. Again, not against each other, they would be each individually. And then what we do is take all the the questionnaires and average them. That way, it's not a vote, that's why that that way, it's. It's, I don't know, fair may not be the right word.
It is a selection, but I guess what I'm talking about is that is it just the governance of the committee? I mean, I imagine at some point, I mean, I think this is going to have to be a Brown Act committee, right, with two council members? But even if it's not.
Three council members.
But even even if it's not, the committee is going to at some point have to make some decisions, right? And and they would vote on those, what's, you know, with it being an even, an even body. How would, how would a tie basically be kind of worked out?
But they're not voting, it has to do, it's a, it's an average of their scores. Okay.
I I'm saying, I'm saying that that in the 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 committee, that would be on the, in the selection process of the committees, basically being put together to do. But there may be other, there's other business of the committee where voting could happen. And with an even body, I I don't, and and potentially a tie. You know, I mean, I could see, look, if there were two council members, a staff person and a PD who have, who have a certain perspective from the city. And then the residents and the business representative have a completely different boom and and they and they, they're trying to, I don't know, decide what they're going to order for lunch. You know, that, how 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 do you break that tie, you know? I mean, I'm I'm being a little facetious here.
No, 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 I get it. What do you suggest? Another person? One less person?
Yeah, I mean, it's a big committee, it's a really, really big committee.
I think it's an important position.
But it's a very, but it it is, no, I I don't discount this. You know, this this process and what you, in the work that you've done here, but it's.
How about two residents and then we're an odd number?
Yeah, yeah. And I do like, I mean, I like the Oaks being, I like like someone from the Oaks and then from the rest of us, you know. Because the Oaks is is historically been pretty underrepresented, you know, underrepresented, they 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 do kind of sit in there, so.
Okay, so let's put, let, if you're okay with it, let's put two residents.
Okay.
And then.
And then I just, I do want to lodge my my one concern or my disagreement that I don't think the committee should have selection authority, like, like. I think that the entire body of all candidates should be brought. And that's, I think the racking and stacking is a is a is a great exercise and of, in a valid or, you know, like a. I can't, can't speak to that, I apologize. But I think that that's a, that's a good role, that's exactly what they do. And I think that they should then rack and stack them and then bring that entire, that entire pool to us and let us kind of.
Randy, could you go down the document a little bit? I just want to see how we can shift this. Applications to hiring committee, discuss rubrics, so. So, okay, so why don't we do this? Let's go out to other comments, I'm hearing you and let's come back.
Perfect.
Okay, all right. So Ms. Lindell, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I I like John's idea of having it an odd number, so.
Okay.
Chance of a tie. I'm I'm a little concerned about some of the things that you're proposing there for. If if they're going to be eliminating people and so on, I I can see where. Well, a lot of people don't know the workings of of the city. And working on the council, working with this, the city manager, that has to be a very important. Relationship. And Randy, could you go down a little bit further, please? Okay, that's fine, thank you. I I I don't know about the public presentations. I I'd like to see in closed session that the candidates do their public presentation. Presentation to the city council. And I don't like the idea of eliminating, let's say we have six candidates. We don't necessarily need to take the top three, maybe there is some obvious. Candidates that wouldn't, wouldn't be good for us and for eliminating those is fine.
So who who would eliminate those?
Well, the committee would have to, the committee would be eliminating those. But I I I just kind of have mixed emotions on this committee, Allison. And then when it gets into the closed session where the 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 whole council needs to have. The interview process going on. And we each have X number of questions to ask, none duplicating any of the others. But they have to ask every, there's, let's say there's a set of two or three questions that each one of us have.
Right.
That we have to ask the same questions of every one of the candidates.
Right. And you would, you would grade each applicant on your questions by themselves. Not to compare them, but you know, is this person applicable, that kind of thing, yes.
Yes, right.
Yeah, I heard you last time, that's why I put that in.
But but I I don't think we should be limiting it to three people because there might be four people. There might be five people who are extremely capable of, it would be a real asset to Delray Oaks. So I I don't like the idea of of just having three. And Randy, can we shoot way up to the top again, please? Okay, thank you. Yeah, I I I get, you know, the hiring committee, I don't want them to be eliminating people. Unless they're absolutely not appropriate, like no experience and so on.
I I think we have to be clear on that, that we either give them the ability to eliminate or they don't eliminate. I I I don't know how we can judge or how we give them a parameter. Because so much of this is. You know, is judgmental, I mean, hmm, I don't know, unless somebody has a good idea, but.
Well, I then I would like it to be not have the authority to do that. What I might suggest is having a separate closed session to hear what the hiring committee has to say.
Okay, so let's come back around to that because you're you're saying what John is, I hear. You know, so it it has to do with their ability to eliminate or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
That that's one of the duties and responsibilities of being on the city council.
Okay, so let's let's go to. Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think you've done a great job laying out this process, I like it. To take into consideration Councilmember Lindell's concerns and also the comments that Councilmember Gagliotti made. I think it should be just a complete slate, you know, you rack them and stack them. And then, you know, that complete slate is then handed down. Now, I know that impacts, and Randy, if you could go down to the bottom, I know that impacts the public presentations. Which I like the idea of that, I I would like to see the public somehow injected into this process. But what I'm concerned about is we might lose some very capable, very high quality candidates. If they know that, you know, there's going to be this public presentation because maybe they don't want their boss to know that they're out there shopping for another job. So that would be kind of a concern for me, but I I still like that idea of somehow injecting the public. Input and, you know, somehow allowing that that type of transparency.
Okay, so Ms. Shirley.
Yes, I I love the process. I am also really happy with the hiring committee, I don't think it has to be an odd number, I like three residents. So equal representation from all areas. Because I think this hiring committee is going to be ranking the candidates. And so it's not like a one to one vote, I mean, I would hope that they could all agree on the top ten candidates. Or the top five, I don't know how many they would interview. To hopefully maybe alleviate the concern with having the hiring committee. Have that power to eliminate, I would like to see that the full council is able to review the documents. So maybe there would be a special council meeting where we could, you know, because it looks like the hiring committee is editing the documents. If I'm not on that hiring committee, I'd still like to have a a voice in what those documents look like. In terms of, you know, what we're putting out to the public. I'd like to also have an input on, you know, how we're, what are the questions that we're asking these candidates? I'd like, I mean, I just, I feel like we should all have input on those those documents. So even the evaluating, you know, how we're going to evaluate the applicants, how are we going to evaluate and grade them once they're being interviewed? So, you know, if we put that piece in there, maybe that would make others feel better about, you know. Because we would have a voice in those decisions that they make. If they follow, obviously, the the rubric and then come to the conclusion. And then we we can decide how many they decide to to interview. I'm okay with having a hiring committee do the, you know, the initial interview. And then coming up with the finalists, and again, it could be any number of finalists that we choose. Maybe we say, give us your top five or give us your top three.
Randy, could you go down just a little bit? I just want to see this time, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Shirley.
Yeah, I'm also, I really like the public presentations. I feel like we are such a small city that our city manager, it really is the face of our city. And so, um, I want that person to be able to interface with the public. And I think it gets, so it's later in the game in the hiring process. And so by this time, if they make it all the way to the end, they will, you know, whatever city they work for, if they are, if they're working for a city, will probably know that they are going out for this position. And so I think being public about their, um, interview at this point wouldn't be unusual. So, um, yeah, so, and, you know, and then I like it coming back to the council to be able to sort of personally interview the, those top finalists. And, um, yeah, so I, 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 I like the whole thing. I think there's, um, accountability. I like the fact that you're bringing in staff, that you're bringing in police, that you're, you know, you're bringing in all aspects. You know, this, that's the, the important thing about our city manager is that they work so closely with all of these, these, you know, stakeholders within the city. And so I think it's important that they all have a voice in this choice. So, um, with, with guidance from the council. And I think we can do that by helping to, um, to finalize the documents that are used. So.
Okay. Thanks. So Pat, hang on just a moment. I'll be right there. Um, so what I'm hearing is the number, there's a concern about the, the voting. And I think the ranking helps with that. So I want to come back around to a question about the, you know, the representation of citizens. And I want to, you know, see if that, you know, the fact that it's ranking, not a one-to-one vote helps alleviate that issue. Um, because they're racking and stacking. The other thing is, um, you know, in here, uh, you know, if we only get three applicants, right, then it's a completely different ball of wax. And so what we could do is somewhere along here, I need to dig into the, into the details, is we include a special session or a, a closed session. Um, the applicants, the, the applications go to the council for consideration and then we figure out the next steps from there. Right? If we get 40, then we do want them to rack and stack. If we get three, then it comes to the council or something like that. But we have, you know, what, two months until, until that place. So there's that. Um, and then I also want to ask, uh, Kim brought up a good question about the documents. You know, is, is everyone okay with this committee? Um, you know, editing, uh, the documents lately? So on that, I want to go back and, um, Dr. Raskoff will go out to public comment in just a minute. Um, but, uh, Ms. Lindtelle has her hand up.
Yeah, um.
Pat, you're there. I can see and hear you.
I can't see where I can unmute me, so.
You're okay. You're not muted.
Okay, um, I, I have the concern that Scott has of, uh, people, any, anybody, be it male or female, applying for this position. Once you have, uh, the applicant speaking in public, there is the risk that you might lose some, some very good candidates because they will not want their media supervisor, um, to know that they're looking for another job. Uh, when I was looking for another job, I never wanted it public knowledge because of that fact that maybe I wouldn't get the next job and maybe be laid off. In fact, I did know of a person that that happened to. They were laid off because the, their boss found out that they were looking for another job. So I.
I mean, academia is a little more forgiving.
Well, we're not.
No, I understand. So, uh, so one way to address that would be, uh, on the application. You know, would they be okay to do a public presentation? And we'll see what we get back.
That's a possibility.
You know.
But I, I think that's a, a very valid point that, um, Scott brought up.
How would you feel about, um, three residents versus two?
No, three residents. I, 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 I like the idea of three residents because I think each, because we are such a divided community and I think each area needs to be representative.
Okay.
And as it turns out, on the north side, you have really all the representation right now other than me. I'm on the south side and we have nobody in the Oaks on anything, on anything.
Okay. So how would you feel about documents? Editing documents?
Um, I, I, I think that probably the HR person should be added to that. Because they, they would have more knowledge.
Okay.
And especially if it's somebody like, I think RGB has somebody that is, um, in tune to government employees and especially like city managers and so on. And.
So would, would you be okay with the committee with the HR rep editing the documents appropriately?
Okay, yes, I would. And I, I have one other request is that when the hiring committee meets, that it's some kind of a closed session to protect the identities of the applicants.
Yes, I agree. Uh, which is why we only have two council members.
Yeah, well, no. It, it's the, the idea is not because of the Brown Act. It's to protect the identity of the, um, individuals applying.
Yes, good, good, good point. Okay. So, um, great. So I think we're almost there with you, public. So public presentations, we still need a little more nuance, but I want to go to, uh, Mr. Gagliotti.
Well, I mean, where's Pat? Thank you. But where's Pat on the, uh, the selection? The, the committee's ability to select?
Uh, we're talking about that next. I think we're coming up to keep going.
I, I would like to see the HR person. Let's say there's 30 people applying. When it comes to city council to interview each of these, we don't need 30 hours of, of interviewing people. And to, the HR person would be able to hopefully eliminate people who certainly didn't qualify. And bring it down to a lower number. That would be a reasonable number. Um, I, I won't state what I think is a reasonable number, but to, well, I will say maybe five or six people that would come to city council closed session for voting and interviewing and voting.
So one idea would be that the hiring committee, which includes the HR representative, could look at all of the applicants, rack and stack them and make recommendations on who not to move forward. And the, but the council receives all of the applications.
Yes.
And then you can look at all of them or not.
Right. And, but the, uh, A, B, C, and D, and E would not have any influence as to what the HR, HR makes the decision as far as, as reading out people.
Why not the, why not the council members and the staff person?
The council members will have their chance to interview the staff person, the PD, the residents. I, I, I just don't feel that, um, the residents have the the, the knowledge to make these decisions.
Okay. Um, so let's go to, uh, Mr. Donaldson. I'm sorry, John. I'm sorry, John.
Yeah. So, so Mayor, I like the idea of having the, the full council being able to, you know, in the interim or, or in, you know, kind of in the, in the middle maybe of this process to at least get to see the full, the full body of all the, all the applicants. And, and I, so I, I like that. I mean, I think beyond that, I would probably be, I would be comfortable that. What I don't want to do is I don't want, I don't want somebody to, to throw out a, a candidate that maybe I personally thought where, you know, had something, a spark or whatever, you know, for whatever reason. Um, so I just don't want, I don't want a committee to presuppose my, uh, what I would say is the responsibility of the council. So having that, that opportunity in the, in the middle of this process or somewhere in that, in that, in that, maybe that initial racking and stacking.
Yep.
I think that would be good. And then beyond that, I then, uh, you know, and then that, that smaller pool, then I would totally think the rest of the process should, should kind of play itself out. But I do want that opportunity by the council to, to at least see the full, you know, the full body of all of them.
Okay, and that, that could be a, a closed session?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It would have to be a closed session. Yeah. Um, the, on the, on the size of the committee, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm fine on it with the three residents. I mean, I think that, that's, that's not where I would want to kind of shave, but I, I think it's, it's okay. I mean, I, let's assume that they're all going to work well together. And I do, I think that your point on, they're, they're not necessarily going to be voting on things. They're just going to be all racking and stacking. Um, there is, there is some opportunity for, um, you know, I guess, subjectivity in that racking and stacking, but hopefully that all kind of works out in the averaging. Um, the one, the one point though, that I'm really, really sticking on, and this is, this is, uh, to Donna, uh, what is it? Commissioner Donaldson's, not Commissioner, Councilman Donaldson's.
It's hard.
It's hard, uh, point. You know, that public, that public presentation, even if we put on a selection, you know, do you want to do a selection or do, or do you want to do a presentation or not? I mean, that still puts them in the position of, if they, if they don't select it, does it work against them? You know, um, because it is, it is a measure that we are, it, it's a, it's a metric that we're using to measure them by. And so I really think it's either got to be all or nothing. It's either no one does a, does a public presentation or everyone has to do a public presentation. And I think that Scott's points are, are valid and same with Pat's is that, you know, it, it's not academia. Um, and it is, you know, that, you are assuming that if they are a good candidate, then they are gainfully employed. Um, and so we would not want to, or we, we would, we wouldn't want to disrupt that and nor would we want to restrict the pool of, of applicants because that becomes a consideration, you know, so.
Okay.
So I think that's, that's, I, I understand that kind of the, the reasoning, you know, why we would want, why, you know, we, we'd all want to basically see how they are in front of us and act in front of us and, but, um, I think we have to be sensitive to the situation that these candidates are going to be in.
So another, another option would be at, uh, the first meeting. We, uh, before any, um, a job description goes out, that we have the HR person there. Right? And see, see their thoughts. I also want to go out to the public a, as well to, you know, because I'm sure we're not the only ones that, that have hired. But I hear you. I've written it down and we're going to come back around to that. I'm just trying to weed through the ones that we can solve easily.
Yeah. What was that last point? Was that last point, one of the considerations for, for the committee? Like the HR person would be part of the initial, that, that would be included in that?
Uh, the HR person and the legal counsel would be a part of it. Yeah, absolutely.
That initial screening. Yeah, I agree.
Well, I, I think they're key to all of it, right? The job description, you know, so that's my next question. Are you okay with this hiring committee with legal counsel and an HR representative editing the advertisement and the job description that Karen sent out?
Yeah, I think Pat's, Pat, Pat nailed it on that one is I think that, um, the HR person is, that, this is, that's their job. They're professional. So, yeah.
Which is, which is why we put that money a, across, right?
No, it, it does though, but we didn't, we didn't actually increase our legal counsel budget. So all these hours that, that legal counsel would be, uh, you know, involved in this would be additive.
So let me, so we can go to him, let's go to him after public comment.
Sure.
And see, you know, perhaps he doesn't have to be involved in all of them, right?
Yeah, right.
Um, and we can, you know, dig down into it and see where he's needed, you know, perhaps he's not at the meeting, but his role is review.
Yeah, I mean, there's still billing hours, but yeah.
Right? Just to make sure that whatever goes out is legal. He doesn't have to be at the meeting where the sausage is made.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd, like you said, I'd like to hear kind of how Alex or Alec, um, kind of, you know, would, uh, would quantify some of that. So.
But you're okay with the HR person.
Yeah.
Editing and you're okay with the three people?
Yeah.
And you're okay with all applicants being racked and stacked and coming to the council?
Yep.
Okay, am I missing anything?
No, I think that's it. I think, uh, the, 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 the public presentation is the only outlier for me right now.
Okay. Um, so let's go to, I'll go out to the public in a moment as soon as I finish going through the council. So, um, Scott Donaldson, can we go back around to these couple of questions?
Yeah, I'm happy and I'm tracking on everything that you just said.
Okay, so three people, all applicants racked and stacked to council and we're going to come back to the, um, public presentation. Okay. That's, that's the big one that we're going to tackle. Um, so Ms. Shirley.
Yeah, I just want to, um, reiterate that I'm, I'm okay with, um, I, I like the hiring committee, um, racking and stacking. Uh, and then it can come back to the council. I still feel like, you know, I'm unclear of whether the council is then choosing who's interviewing or is it the committee that is choosing who's being interviewed? I'm okay with the committee choosing who's being interviewed. Um, especially I guess if, uh, I have an input into how they're doing the grading, but, um, you know, I'm flexible with that. So. And I, I.
So it sounds like Kim wants to be on, uh, the committee.
Whoops.
Yep.
Okay. But you're okay with three people? You're okay with rack and stack? And, um, how do you feel about public presentation?
I, I feel like it's important. I want a city manager who is, wants the job bad enough that they're willing to get and in front of our residents and, and talk to them. And I feel like that's a really important part of, of that job. And so I want someone who's, who's willing to do that. And who hopefully is in a job right now where they have such good working relations that they have maybe a supportive community and, uh, you know, they know that they're interested in, in taking on their own city.
Well, and, and often an assistant city manager or somebody that may want this, um, their city managers would want this for them. But let's, let's go there. So what I'd like to do is go out to the public. I'm seeing lots of hands. And then we'll come back to the council. So, um, uh, Dr. Raskoff.
Hey everybody, um, just a couple of comments. Um, yeah, thanks for the timer. I guess two, two comments that have mostly been dealt with, uh, since I first raised my hand, which is, I, I think it's really important for the committee, um, the hiring committee to, to have a say in the, in the, in the, the initial grading of the rubric and then it comes to the full committee. Otherwise, there's no, there's really no sense in even having the committee. If they, if they have no power other than getting the documents together that are going to be advertised, it's not worth all that, all that time from anybody. Um, just a comment about the, um, sort of the traditional use of minimum qualifications, um, that we, I'm coming at this from a very, you know, biased academic point of view from, from, uh, MPC, uh, where I've been on, uh, dozens, dozens of, of hiring committees. Um, and if you design your job application well, you can sometimes catch a lot of folks with the minimum qualifications, whatever they happen to be. Um, uh, but that's where that, that hiring committee might be able to, with the HR person's help, um, really rub away all, all the folks that have no business taking up the time of the council, uh, in, in private session for, for, uh, you know, for, for the, the interviews certainly, but maybe even for, for the review. So that's, that's something that's very typically done. Um, so you're going to get a subset that, but it's, it's not a, a capricious decision. It's based upon the decided upon, um, you know, uh, sort of minimum qualifications of the job, whatever those might be. Uh, last thing I want to mention was the idea of the public, um, speaking. I, I, I really like the idea of the public. Again, I'm coming at it from a pretty biased perspective where this is a, an absolute must in the education world. Um, and it, it's, I mean, in, in my world, it is well known that we keep everything secret if you apply for a job unless you're a finalist. And then once you're a finalist, it's public knowledge because you're calling letters for, you're, you're calling the, the letters of reference, you know, you're, you're, you're reaching out, you're inviting them in for public, uh, comment and, and sort of critique. Um, so that I'm, I'm really in favor of that idea. And I, I think, um, I think, again, when it's, if it's stipulated on the front end that, uh, you'd only have to worry about those difficult questions if you're one of, you know, three finalists. That I think is a pretty, um, a pretty easy choice for somebody to make if they're, uh, if they're wanting. uh, if they're wanting to, to move in a job like this. So I'm, as a resident, I'm personally in favor of, of the public presentations. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, Mr. Krieger.
Yeah. Hi, uh, Yuri Krieger and Gwendol. And just kind of backing up some what's already said. I love the three citizens. I mean, I really would hate to lose the, uh, the Oaks North and South representation. That's true. I think it's a great idea. Uh, as I was listing all this, one idea, suggestion occurred to me, it, it kind of melts what you guys were talking is, you know, let the, let the committee rack and stack it. Then let the committee give you, if you don't like three, make it five. There ought to be some sort of efficiency there. But as all of you or several, I think all of you, so you want to see all the documents. You could easily insert a mechanism where if two council people say, hey, this person's on the top five, but I've read through this, you know, the, uh, the package is, and we'd like to include them, make a mechanism for that to happen. Otherwise, just, you know, let, let the commit do their job and, and narrow it down for you to three or five. And but leaving open that option where like I said, if two of you, you know, I would say make it two, don't, this would be one, you'll, you'll end up with all 30 people again. But, you know, make a mechanism where you can easily add in someone who the committee maybe didn't put up in the top five. That way you're a station that concerned of maybe someone getting left out. Uh, but you're, you're still keeping that efficiency of having that committee do some of that heavy lifting for you. So that you're not, you know, having a 15 hour closed session or whatever you might end up being. Uh, I, I'll chime in on the, on the natural, on the, on the, um, public presentations. You know, I, I appreciate, uh, what council, uh, person Lintel was saying about, you know, in private industry, uh, totally get, it's a lot more cut through. Different rules for, um, public servants and they're not going to be able to fire someone just because they went and asked for a job. And I, I do think that that's just part of the natural process. Your city man, you're an assistant city manager, you're, you're usually, you're a planner, you're assistant city manager. You're going to be a city manager somewhere. They know that. They expect that. I mean, that's part of the, of the natural process. And I don't think that that's going to be a problem for anyone. And last thing I, I would just agree, just kind of, uh, back up what Dr. Raskoff was saying about, don't undershoot on the requirements. If anything else, we could always go out and support them later. But, I mean, looking at this, I mean, undergraduate or, you know, most time it's a graduate degree in public and business administration or public administration is pretty standard. You know, a certified public manager accreditation or a, the ICM, a certification, several years' experience. Yeah, don't, don't shoot low. Let's, let's, let's set that bar high and, and, uh, see if we can, you know, get some good candidates come here and compete with us. We've got a shot here. Let's, let's don't miss it. So, uh, but thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Mary Solzeng. There you go. Oh, I can't hear you.
Hi, my name is Mary Solzeng. I live at Hillwell Place. I have a couple of things, a committee of eight or a committee of nine, uh, not an awful lot of difference. And rather than eliminating one resident, I would like the council to consider adding other, another business person. Or perhaps I spent a lot of years working in county government. And when we were hiring for managers and, and, uh, executive managers, we would always ask our counterparts in another county to come and sit on the preliminary committee. Because they have the same kind of experience and, and really know, uh, how to evaluate people for the job that, that's really being, uh, asked of them. So, you know, we could consider either one of those two options. The other thing is, I think, I don't think that it's wise to tell the committee how many candidates you want to see. Uh, what I would like to see the, the council consider is to ask the committee or a representative from the committee to present to the council in closed session, all of the candidates and make their recommendation for the top one, two, three, four, five, however many they have. You know, if you pick a number like three and they have four really super good candidates, you have a chance that you're not going to really get a recommendation for that fourth one. And conversely, you know, if you ask for five, you might be taking a look at one or two that they would think would be just totally disqualified for the job based on their education or experience. So those are just a couple of things. Uh, I, I really want to compliment you, Mayor Kerr. This was a, a beautiful outline and it's been a marvelous discussion from the council. And many, many things have been, have been ferreted out of this. And I think that, uh, I have an awful lot more confidence in the way that our city is going forward to, uh, do this interviewing process for a city manager. And I compliment you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Clark.
Good evening. So first of all, I just want to say I have 52 years of working non-academia. I have been through a boatload of interviews for a boatload of jobs and have a very good feel for how they should go. So my first point I want to make is that this is a human resource matter. It is not a public matter. So it should not be handled through the public. Okay? That's number one. Number two is I don't understand why you're trying to so complicate this process and think you have to recreate the wheel. I am sure that there has been a process already in place for all the cities around town where they demonstrate how they go about finding these resumes. I'm getting the feeling that this is trying to, like the sign committee. The planning commission had it knocked out, but you thought that you, a better idea would be make it this huge committee. And it's been like six months and it's gone, you know, it, it hasn't come back yet. So I don't know what's going on with that. Also, this is your responsibility. It is not the PD's responsibility. It is not the staff's responsibility. It is far and away not the citizens' responsibility to hire this person. You cannot give up the responsibility of hiring them. And if you happen to hire somebody good, you take all the credit. And if it turns out you hire somebody that's not so good, you can't defer that responsibility on, well, the citizens made a bad selection. And I'd like you to just go back to the fact that it states very clearly and you go over and over. And oh my God, I heard this so many times. The city manager works for the city council. The city council is supposed to represent the citizens. So this is a city council decision and a city council process. And there's, as far as I'm concerned, there should be no citizens involved in this at all. I think that this is one of those specialty things where you plunk a little money down to an HR person to do the initial feeding of the, uh, you know, receiving of all the, uh, applications. Based on what your recommendations are, they can say, here's the 10 best we have. Cause you know what? Human resources, um, companies do this professionally, often all the time. And they know how to make it work and they know how to get it done. And I think time is probably of the essence. So those are my recommendations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Allian.
Yes, thank you very much. Fascinating discussion here tonight. And, uh, you've got a real challenge ahead of you. I'm not really excited about the idea of the, uh, public presentation. I can, I can understand why that might be a, well, I think it might scare, run a few people off that you might want to take a look at. The other thing about making a public presentation is, is that there are some excellent actors out there. And they will perform very well in front of the public and they'll perform very poorly in their job. I've seen that too in the, in my experience as an interviewer and thought, wow, this is a really just an amazing individual. They're going to do a great job and they just fall on their face real quickly. So, uh, the, the tricky part is leading through all of that and finding the core values or core competencies that you need to have for a city manager. And I don't, I, I would put little weight on a public presentation and more weight on the interviews and the in-depth analysis and taking a look at what have they done in the past? To, uh, to the point about, uh, it's your responsibility, I, I, the city council is not going to shirk on this responsibility. I think you all know that that is your responsibility. You're just seeking input in your process here. And there's nothing, uh, I think, I think that's potentially good. And the tricky part is figuring out who those people are that you're going to ask for citizen input from. That's going to be difficult because there's such a diversity of, uh, of people in the community. And then, and then that goes back again to the statement that you're our representatives. It's your responsibility. So, uh, if you want some input from those people, I, I, I guess, uh, good luck on that. I'm not sure how that's going to work out for you, but, uh, if, if you want to try it, give it your best shot. And finally, just, uh, good luck with this. This is a big responsibility. The city manager's ability to manage the people of the staff is so critical. You're going to either have great people, uh, working for you and they're going to love working for their city manager and they're going to love working for the city. You get the wrong person in there, it's going to be a disaster and the city just suffers as a result. So thank you very much for allowing me to comment.
Thank you. Um, any other public comment? Uh, Mr. Agersdale Cronin? You're muted. I saw a hand. But now I see a clock.
There we go.
There we are. Okay.
I can never find the hand wavy thing on the menu bar. So just.
I can't either sometimes.
Okay. So moving really quickly through the list, um, I think you use your HR firm to do the first cut based on your job description. Standard practice all over the world. You put out a set of requirements, HR looks at them and says, yes, no, there you go. First cut out. HR and I think somebody mentioned HR and legal counsel to just review documents for legality. Perfect. The hiring committee then ranks and stack, racks, racks and stacks based on the rubric that you talked about. Then it goes to the council to choose the top, however many the council feels like they should choose. Part, as far as the public interview, this is, this person's going to be the face of Delray Oaks. They're going to be on the news. They're going to be at public meetings. They're going to be all over the place. If they can't talk in public, they're not going to be a good representation for the city. I think that's really important. And as Mr. Krieger pointed out, by the time you get down to the final two or three, these folks have already, it's out there that they're going to be, look, they're looking for a new job. You know, you're getting calls in for references, things like that. They're taking time off for interviews. I don't think that the public interview is a bad idea at all. I think, you know, whether it has a ton of weight as far as the final selection, I don't know about that part. That would be up to the council to decide. But I think it would be good for them to at least have a chance to speak. And so you guys see what's going on. And then just go into your closed session at some point and make your final, final selection. That's my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other hands? Physical? Not seeing any. I'll come back to the council. So let's start with Pat, uh, Ms. Lintel, sorry. Um, so before we go, uh, Ms. Lintel, uh, uh, an idea popped up in, in my head and I don't know if this will work or not. Actually, uh, we wanted to talk to Alex too. Not everyone's going to want to be a part of a public presentation, right? Another option would be to go out and ask people who would want to be. And it's just the hiring committee. I mean, I'm just, I'm just throwing this out here, trying to look for some kind of a solution. What that would do is that would mean only two council members could be there, but it would be a, um, a, it, it wouldn't be a public meeting. It would be people that would express interest in being a part of it. So that's just an idea. Um, what I want to do is go to Alex and see, um, his thoughts, his, um, you know, we talked about, you know, your hours and things like that. So Alex, could you chime in with what you're thinking?
Sure. Um, you know, as I, I frequently say, your, your legal bills are the function of two things, the hourly rate and the amount of hours. And the law firm convert, controls the first and the client controls the second. I think it would be prudent in this circumstance to have me review things, but not necessarily be part of the, of the meetings there. This is a, a, an area in which the council has, um, the prerogative and the responsibility to exercise its, its discretion and judgment in electing someone. I can advise to the legality of things, but really the, the substantive decision is for the council members. So I'm happy to sort of review and be on the sidelines and when needed, you know, draft the employment agreement, work with the city through the Brown Act, um, as far as, you know, when things can be confidential, as far as going into closed session. I think that would be a prudent approach to sort of be there as needed, but, uh, I don't see a need for me to be there, uh, throughout the entirety of the proceedings.
Okay. Are you hearing anything in the conversation that raises any red flags for you?
The decision of whether or not this is the counselor's responsibility or the subcommittee's responsibility, that type of thing. Ultimately, the council can't delegate their decision. That doesn't mean that they can't rely on subcommittees to rack and stack, as I've heard it say, or assign some sort of, um, point system. But that's a policy consideration that this council has discretion over. Whether or not they, they want to do open or closed, or, or whether it's, it's public or, or more, uh, private. That's for the, for the council to decide. Uh, from my perspective, both paths are, are legally, uh, appropriate.
Okay. Great. So looking at this, so it looks like with a couple of nuances, right? We, again, legal counsel would be just for professional advice after the fact. Whereas the HR representative would be part of the hiring committee, though they wouldn't do the rack and stacking, they would be there to advise. They would meet to do the descriptions and create the rubric and all that kind of stuff with the, um, with the HR person, advertisements go out, uh, collection period. Applications would go to the hiring committee on, at the very latest April 17th. There's no way we couldn't push that out and, or have them take a look at it, do the rubric, right? April 27th, when is our April council meeting? Cause we could, um, try and push it up a little bit. That way the, um, we would eliminate their interview within two weeks, but it, they could get the rubric to us for the April council meeting for consideration.
It's April 27th, Mayor.
Oh. Perfect. So, well, no. Well, yeah, it's closed session. So when could we, um, get it to the council at the latest? For a closed session? Because it doesn't go out in the regular packet?
Mayor, can I, can I ask a clarifying question? The closed session, uh, I'd have to double check this, but I believe the closed session exemption for personnel has to be specific to an employee. So there's not the ability to go into closed session and say, you know, what do we want to, what do we want to, you know, how do we want to structure this? Let, let's sift through that type of thing. It, it has to be with respect to individuals, um, who are considered for employment. So.
So how, how was it done previously? If you're not discussing it in pub, in, in?
Well, you can go and discuss individuals, but sort of how, how the process should go is something as we're doing tonight, um, that can be done. And keep in mind, the committee, uh, would not be subject to the Brown Act. But as far as, um, discussing candidate selection, unless there's individuals, um, that are being discussed, uh, that matter can't go to closed session.
So what I'm suggesting is that the, we could push the hiring committee meet to discuss the rubrics. And rather than which to interview, they would rack and stack them then and get the rack and stack and the applications to the council for consideration. So we wouldn't be talking process. We would actually be talking people.
Then as long as it's i- in relation to individuals, uh, who are under consideration by the council, that's okay.
Okay. So.
Mayor, to the mayor, on that, um, they, are there, are there a couple of bites?
They, are there, are there a couple of bites in that? I mean, is the rubric going to be brought to the council prior to the, the letting out of an, of an application or the RFQ? Do we, do we, the council get to see kind of what we are, what we're, what we're going to be grading these individuals on and comment?
So if you, if you look at the list.
Right, I am looking at it and I see, I see this down here, but I'm, but just in, in, in the discussion and in all the dates and everything, I got a little confused. What I see is that the council does get an opportunity here in this list. Down at, what is, April 27th?
Well, actually, if you look up at number two, right? The rubric, I state needs to be complete by the 29th.
Yes.
When is our March meeting?
The 23rd.
Okay, so we can play with the dates on that. And so then the rubric would come to the council for consideration.
Just the rubric, but not, not individuals, correct?
Correct. And so that could be discussed out in the public.
The clarifying point that I just wanted to make sure is that, is that we, we got, I, I, I think the committee should go forth and figure out what the rubric is and then bring it to us and let us kind of decide.
So Randy, if you could please, I can't edit this. So in, under number two, if you could say, and when's the March meeting, 23rd?
Yes, 23rd.
So if, Randy, if you could change to be to, 23, so the 20th, is that that Friday? Oh, it has to go into the regular agenda, so the Wednesday. Okay, we need to play with these dates a little bit. But there needs to be something in between B, like a B1 that says to the council for approval, the March. Okay.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. So are, is the, is the council only reviewing the evaluating criteria?
Yes.
They're not looking at the interview questions?
Well, I mean, they could do all of it.
But that wouldn't be in a public session?
Yes.
No, it would be, it would be in a public session, given, given what Alex just said, it has to be in a public session. That's not something that we can take to close.
Right.
So, so then all of our candidates are going to know all the questions that we'll ask?
So let's go to, so Ms. Lintel, do you want to know the interview questions beforehand?
Yes, I would like to know them beforehand. And we need to designate who's going to do which and so on.
Right.
Volunteer. But also, somebody mentioned in the public about getting letters of recommendation. Well, if a person requests a letter of recommendation, then they have forfeited any privacy knowledge.
Not necessarily if it's not their supervisor.
Well, if it's a coworker, then the coworker may be telling the supervisor or telling another coworker, I mean.
We can't, we can't control that. I mean, it's up.
We can control it by not having public presentations.
Okay, let's, let's, let's go back to the rubric and the interview questions. So I don't see Scott on my screen. Scott, Mr. Donaldson, do you have any thoughts? Any concerns, any suggestions?
I mean, I'm not so much concerned about whether or not they have the questions prior to, so. Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I would defer to what the rest of the council thinks.
Okay. So let's go back to John just for a minute.
I mean, did, did you want to ask some questions? Cause I, I've got some comments, but did you have some questions for me?
Do I? No.
Yeah, okay, so then, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with the question. Well, I mean, look, that's, that's just the nature of it. We can't have it both ways, right? We can't, we can't, we can't have a totally transparent process, but then just want, we only want transparency on the things that we want transparent. So, so the interview questions have to basically come out and the rubric, the, the, the selection rubric has to basically become kind of public knowledge and, that's, I mean, I would just have to deal with that. There was, I, I think that was really kind of, that was the only driving comment. At one point, when are we going to make the final decision basically on the, the, the public presentation part? I'm still holding fast on that. I, I think, I think we ought to state, we ought to take it out.
Okay, let's shift to the public presentation discussion. So Ms. Lintel, your thoughts? You don't want a public presentation?
No, I don't, because I, if it were me applying for the position, it should be on my capabilities. Public presentations are, are important as, because the city manager represents the city in meetings, et cetera. But that, if, if required public presentations, I would not want common knowledge that I was running for the office. And I may be the most qualified person there, but I would not submit an application based on needing to, to publicize the fact that I am looking for another job.
Gotcha. John, you don't want one?
Yeah, and I think, I, I don't, I don't know if it's necessarily, you know, I guess a critical, a critical point of it. I, I think that the, the city manager has to be a good communicator, but the city manager also has to be a good facilitator, has to be a good manager. And so I think that I think there's a lot of weight being put on this, this public presentation. And, and I think there's more downside for pre-selecting or presupposing or getting rid of potentially good candidates who may be great facilitators and great managers and, and be able to kind of address a lot of our questions if they are concerned with, with, you know, potentially letting out that they're, that they're looking for work. And I think that that is a very, very real concern. And again, I, I said this point earlier, if you are good, then you're gainfully employed. And so most of the people that, that I would hope that would be coming in already have jobs. And so I, I do think it's, it's pretty important, important there. And I, I think a lot of, also a lot of assumptions have been made in some of the comments that, oh, well, you know, you know, it, we're, we're, we're kind of just making assumptions on some of the situations that these people might be in. And I don't think we should. I, I don't think that, that's not our, that's not our kind of measure, or that's not something that we should be measuring, something that, hey, they should be able to take the risk. If they're, if they're good enough for us, then they, they should, you know, bet it all on black and, 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 you know, interview in, in public or do a public presentation to us. I don't think that that's a, a fair criteria.
So another idea that just literally just popped into my head. What if when the council does the interview, we include the three residents on the hiring committee?
I'm sorry. Say that again?
What if we included? Actually, the hiring committee with us?
Where?
On the interview. So my concern is we've eliminated one entire interview because we only want them to rack and stack. And so now there's only one interview with the council, which is fine. But, you know, would it be advantageous to have the staff person and the PD person and the three residents and the business representative in that as well? They don't necessarily have to ask questions, but they've been invested in the process. There is some public, obviously these people are invested in the process. I would, I would be fine with that as a compromise.
They are, so they're coming into a room and there's going to be, there's going to be all the, the full council and then these, and then these six, these six other people from the committee.
Yep.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, that's a big interview.
Yep.
Well, Alex, didn't you just say that, that, for a closed session, that, that couldn't happen?
Close session, there's the ability to interview individual candidates. Now, I suppose, you know, under the Brown Act, the, the persons allowed in, in closed session are strictly those that are necessary to sort of make the decision whether or not the, the committee is required for that. I'd have to think about and we'd have to sort of finalize the process. But yes, for, for Brown Act, for a closed session exemption needs to be regarding, and the individual under consideration.
And Mayor, your, your vision is, is that this would happen in closed session, that we would have, was it six and five?
I'm trying to find a solution.
Yeah, no, I get it. I totally understand.
And, and I'm, we're just having a conversation and I'm coming up with it on the spot, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, so, so then.
The voting has to be closed session and it just has to be.
We're not voting, it's just an interview.
Interview, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just an interview, it's not voting.
But the interview could be done at the time of the selection.
Kim?
I'm, I'm willing to give up the public presentation. If we have our hiring committee actually rack and stack and, and then maybe we have, the council has some input into who they do, they, they do the initial interviews. So we maybe talk to them about who we want to be the initial interviews. So they do one interview with the hiring committee.
Yep.
And then their second interview is with the council. And, and I, I'm willing to give up public presentation.
Okay.
With that.
So Randy, can you strike through number seven?
Through the mayor, may I, may I? I wanted to explore Kim's compromise, the, the, the initial, the initial interview is just to be able to rack and stack, but the committee is not selecting. They're, they're not, they're not making a decision whether that person goes on to the second interview, is that correct? Everyone, everyone gets two interviews, correct?
Um.
You're making it hard.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, if, if we've got, if we've got 20 applicants, they rack and stack and they come up with 10. And we say, yeah, those 10 look great. And they interview those 10 and after those 10, they go, oh, you need to see these five, or you need to see these seven. I, I'm okay with that decision. If they, if, you know. So, so maybe they, they whittle it down. Maybe it's just five. And so they interview those five and then we interview those.
I totally get, I totally get the, I just, I, I totally understand the efficiency of that, of that process. And that's really, what I think is kind of the beauty of this whole thing. But there was a point that Alex made that that does take the selection away from the council and it is the council's responsibility to do that. The committee, a, a directed committee cannot, cannot make that selection, cannot pre-select and, and just, and.
So they rack and stack, they come to a closed session, they tell us they're rack and stack and, and we decide who they interview. I don't know, am I following you, Kim?
Yeah, but then they, we are essentially giving them some responsibility if there is a large pool to whittle that down.
And it's also two council people, so it's two of us.
Right.
Forget you have your HR who is a professional.
Yes. Yes. So the HR person, two council, a staff, a PD, right? So let's walk through that again. Kim, can you walk through that one more time?
I want to hear it again.
And, and remember what I didn't put on here, and I just threw the dates together, is I didn't put on the city council meetings. There's no reason we can't talk about the different applications in closed session. That's what I heard Alex say. Am I, am I correct in that translation, Alex?
That's right, as long as you're speaking about an individual who's potentially to be hired by the, by the city.
So the rubric and the paper, no, the rubric is going to the council meeting in, at large. And then the April meeting, we move the April, number five, we move that up. They bring their suggestions for interviews, we review that and say yea or nay.
So they've already then pre-selected, I mean, they, they, they're reading it down.
They're rack and stacking it and they're bringing it to us. And they're saying, with their rack and stack, they're going to have their top five. We review it and we say, yes, yes, no, yes, yes. So they're, they're doing the heavy lifting, we are saying yes, yes, no, no.
I think that's, I think that's right. I think that makes, I think all of that works.
I think we're, we're getting there, it's, it's.
Yeah, as long as we're not throwing, as long as we're not throwing fish out, right? We're not, we're not throwing candidates out, right?
No. But they, we need them to do the work.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We need them to do the work, to rack and stack. We get all of the applications, we get all of the rubric.
Right.
And then we either agree or don't.
Right.
And then we give direction on yes, number one, number three, number four, and number five.
I think that's good, I think that all works.
And then they go back and they do that first interview?
I.
I'm sorry.
No.
So has, has there been a first interview before the rack and stack?
No.
I mean, there has not, so the rack and stack is totally a desktop exercise.
Yes.
Yes.
Based on applications and, and all of that.
And I, I am concerned about having everything public, like the interview questions, the, how we're going to grade. That just seems really strange to me. So if, if, if we can't have a public meeting or a closed session where we talk about that, then I'm okay with the hiring committee and the HR person, along with Alex's direction, sort of developing those tools. And then, and then they use those tools to rack and stack.
Yeah.
Right? And then they, they bring them to us and we say yea or nay on their rack and stack. And then they go off and they interview. Now, again, if they interview, if we say, yes, we want you to interview 10 people, that there may be, maybe they'll come back and go, you know, yeah, you, you all, the council needs to, to, you know, interview 10 people. Maybe they say, oh, it's so obvious, these five are the best. I, I'm okay giving the count, the, the hiring committee, like, or at least having a conversation with them at that time.
Right.
So I want to leave some flexibility for that.
Okay, so now let me see if I can, if I can repeat this back, then I think I got it.
Okay.
All right, so like, we're, we're in a desktop, 10 people come in, there's, there's a desktop review and they're racked and stacked. That, and that's, that's totally done by the HR, that, that body right there, the, the hiring committee. Then, then we go into a closed session, that committee comes into a closed session. And is that, that's the entire body, that's all 11?
No, because there's two council people on it.
No, no, that's, that, that is, that's what I'm saying, it's five plus six, right?
No, what I would suggest at that point is we have two council people on that committee. So when we go into closed session, whoever that is brings the recommendations and says, okay, this is, this is what we've come up with. You know, what do you think? And this is why. Right? And then we, right, so it's, right. So then, so session, we're talking about people and it's with people that are on the committee.
Exactly, right. So it's, it's not a body of 11, it's, it's not a body of 11, it's, it's, it's closed session with five people. So that, that's, that is closed session number one.
Yes.
Then, direction comes out of that closed session, which then filters back to the hiring committee. Now, what does the hiring committee do with that knowledge? See, now we, now the council has said, okay, these are the five people we want, we'd like you to look at. What happens then?
They interview them.
Okay. So they've yet, they've yet to be interviewed, now this is their first interview, first.
Correct.
Okay.
Why, why do we need two interviews? Why, why do we do the rack and stacking and presenting that to the city council? And then the city council wants to alter that, so be it. But then.
Because it gives, it gives.
Only, only by the city council. Only one interview process.
But what it does is it gives the staff person, the PD and the three residents and the business representative an opportunity to ask questions and to give feedback. What we do with that is up to us.
Okay, so they're not necessarily whittling down that number after that interview then?
Well, they would come back with recommendations and we can take them or not.
Okay, and I think Pat makes a good point. Why then would we have to do the second interview with the committee?
Not with the committee, it wouldn't be with the committee.
Okay.
What we were originally talking about that, we had eliminated that.
Okay.
So now it's back.
I, I see a need for an interview by the city council at the point of making the.
Yes. At the end, at the end, at, at the pinnacle of the, yeah.
So then let me ask, in that, in that first interview.
Yep.
In that, in that first interview, does the selection committee have a, have, or does? In that, in that first interview, does the selection committee have a, have, or does, does the hiring committee have selection power from that first interview?
No.
Or, or do they bring all five? Do they bring all five? Do they, they do, they do an interview, they rack, they, they.
They will rack and stack again.
That then goes to the council. Then the council interviews all those same five people. Okay. I like the, I'm good. I now think I understand this perfectly.
But I, I, I still don't see the need to have two interviews. I think the one interview is sufficient. Would, and that would be when the city council makes a decision.
We will, so the last interview is the city council after everything. Basically, the, the, there will be two rack and stacks that are done by the committee.
Yeah.
After each rack and stack, they will come to us or one of us on the committee will come and say, these are the top three we thought, and this is why. And the committee as a whole, the council as a whole will say yay or nay. We want two, four, and eight. And then they will go, they will do an, an, an initial interview and they will again rack and stack. And they will say, this person, you know, is crazy and will either take that or not. And then we interview them for the final.
Final.
And then we decide.
Right.
I, I still don't see the need for the first interview. I see only need for one interview. And that would be at the time of the voting on the.
Well, we would vote on them after the council interview.
But I'm saying one, one interview, not two interviews.
Yeah. And Pat, this is all part of kind of making a compromise on the public presentations. And that's why they would have that opportunity to interview them at that point.
The, so the first interview kind of suffices for a public presentation because there are three members, there's four members, well, three members of the, three residents and maybe a fourth member of the.
And, and I think it's, I think the staff person and the PD should be a part of this. Right? So that's also part of the first interview. They can ask whatever questions, you know, they feel is important from their perspective. Yes, we make the ultimate decision, but we're trying to get as many of the pertinent voices in the process as possible.
So the committee would not be presented with questions to ask? The, the questions that they ask would be on their own?
I don't know. What do you think?
That's a good question.
Kim?
Um, I think the hiring committee as a group with the HR person will have everything developed ahead of time. So when they get to that first interview, they already know what questions they're going to ask because it's been developed by all of them with the HR person.
Well, then, when they come to having the second interview, they, they've been, already been presented with the questions. They know exactly what questions are going to be.
Our questions will be different.
Our questions will be different.
And our own. Yeah, right. Yeah.
Whether they're your own, they're not presented to the committee by.
Right. That's correct.
Half or somebody else. They just have to be their own private questions.
That's correct. That's right. I'm, I'm now getting the, the, the two interviews is one's a committee interview and the other's a final interview. I mean, it's.
Just the council.
I mean, that's generally held. You, you do generally get a second interview and.
Okay. That's, that's coming with me.
Okay. So let me, let me do this. I'll, you know, we're not, I mean, we can vote on this process, but I just want to reiterate it. I would have to go through and, and manipulate it a little bit. But what we'll do is we'll pull together the committee and they will meet to go over the descriptions with the HR person with legal review. After, the advertisements will be posted for a four-week collection period. The committee will gather, or will get the applications. They will rack and stack in April. And then one of us will bring that to closed session in April for the next step. And then the hiring committee will do their first interview. They will rack and stack again, bring it, well, one of us will bring it back in May. Meet to discuss three after interviews, May. So in May, we interview. We select, we're done.
Yes.
Okay. So my question to Alex is, um, do we need to vote on this process? Or do we today vote on the two council members for the committee?
I think it's up to the, to the pleasure of the council. The action item is consider selection process for new city manager. I think if you were to, to select the two, two council members for the committee, I think that's within the definition of that. And if indeed that was the pleasure of the council, then yes, a, a vote on that would be, would be needed. So for the process as well as the, the appointments.
So my next question is, um, you know, I, I think, and hopefully Karen wouldn't mind putting something out, asking for these positions. I can work with Jeff on the different people for the hiring process. Do we need to do a very quick special meeting to vote on the hiring committee before March 15th?
Yes.
Okay. You heard it here. Okay. And so I will work with acting city manager Hoyn on, on creating that based on conversations with the HR person and how quickly we can get that. So what I'd like to do is talk about the two council members. I would love to be on this committee. And I think as mayor, I would qualify for that. So I want to raise my hand. And, you know, does, is anyone else also interested?
I'll, I'll volunteer. I don't have a lot of time, but this is, I think it's important and I, I mean, it's, it's, it's really important. And I also, I'm now, I'm pretty vetted with the process. Like, I'm pretty, pretty, so.
Okay. I make a motion that John and Allison be the two council members represented on this committee.
I'll second that.
Scott's like, come on. Okay. Karen, could you please do a roll call? Vote.
Council, um, sorry. Council member Shirley?
Aye.
Council member Gagliotti?
Aye.
Council member Donaldson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintel?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye. So it passes unanimously. I just want to say, I know this was long and I know it was complicated, but I really enjoyed the process and I thank you all for being a part of it. And this is probably one of the most important things we're going to be doing. So thank you for the time and the attention.
I have another comment.
Okay.
The, some of these meetings may be dependent, date dependent on the availability of the HR person.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah. So we'll, we'll work on that. Um, so, Dr. Ascoff, do you have your hand up?
I, I do. Just a, just a quick comment to just remind everybody that I, I, I think with the timeframes that we're looking at here, everything's going to be via Zoom. So no one's, you know, none of these people are getting together in one big room as was sort of imagined. It's easy to, for us to immediately jump to that mindset, but this is, you know, getting these large committees together is actually much easier to do now when we're all doing it remote. So that would probably work in, in your favor in terms of getting all these people together.
I agree. Thank you. All right. So, um, I'll work with acting city manager and Karen. And we'll get all this in, in a form that everyone can understand. So let's move on to new business item E, update on Delray Oaks Garden Center. And I want to thank everybody for hanging in there with us. All right. I'm going to turn this over to acting city manager Hoyn.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, Council. Based upon the direction that was given to staff regarding the CUP and the lease with the garden center. To update the council monthly on the status and the process for getting the tenant into compliance. I just wanted to start with a quick update, give you a timeline shortly after we received that direction last month. We met this, the mayor, the city attorney, myself and planning staff to research both the CUP and the lease, the original lease and the original CUP. And to identify any possible violations of the lease or the CUP and to prioritize them. And also not only to prioritize, but also to find out which would be the most timely to do, to tackle first, the easiest to, to the hardest. Since that time, the city attorney and I and planning have met. We developed a, a list of those items. We talked about which ones we wanted to present first to get some traction and get some movement to getting the tenant into compliance. After that, the city attorney and I had a brief phone conversation, phone meeting with a representative from Mr. Mori, the tenant. And basically presented a list of initial compliance requirements that the city has placed on the tenant. And I'm going to let Alex talk about that and the feedback that he's gotten from council since that meeting. But there are basically four things that we wanted to start with. And Alex, I'll turn it over to you if, if you'd like to follow up from there.
Sure. So we, we, Mr. Mori has retained Ann McGowan, a very fine attorney in, in Carmel. And also working with Doug Schmidt, who's the former city manager for City Carmel. So we, we pointed out four things that were sort of what I call the little hanging fruit that the, that we'd like to see Mr. Mori do quickly to show good faith. Shut down the repair shop. Number two, getting his lease, getting the footprint of the lease back in order. Getting the fence approved that he put up. My reading of the lease is that any structure or improvement needs to be permitted. And four is to work with the city proactively to identify which Sundays during the year they would be open. So as the saying goes, this just in, right before we walked into our virtual council meeting, the representative from Mr. Mori called, left me a voicemail. I was actually already starting to get ready for the meeting. And Mr. Mori has committed in two weeks to have the repair shop removed and cleaned up completely. He will not be operating on any Sundays for the time being. And if he decides to operate on Sundays going forward, he will let the city know of that before he does so. So the city can, is not left playing, you know, how many, how many Sundays? Or is this, you know, one Sunday too many? They will be pursuing an after the fact permit for the fence that went up. And Mr. Mori has obtained a map, a specific map of the leased area. And from what I understand is figuring out ways to get his footprint back within those leased areas. So very positive updates, just like I said, right before we came into this meeting. And I don't think you have action on this, on this item, but this is just informational, but that's where we are. We're very pleased that his representation has been proactive in communicating with us. And, and I think we're starting to see some movement here. So.
And thank you, Alex. Mayor, Council, the only other thing that I'll add is these were initial verbal discussions and verbal requests. The city attorney and I will be following up with a formal letter with those demands this week. And we'll be sending it out so that it is properly documented and we have the, the documents to rely on to, you know, get compliance moving forward.
That is fantastic news. Thank you, gentlemen. Wonderful. So let's move on to number seven, staff reports, acting city manager report. It's over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try and make it as quick as possible. I know everybody's been here quite some time. Just on the city hall front, the mayor, council, city manager and city attorney and our police chief attended our strategic planning session. We updated our three-year goals and our six-month objectives. I think that's a very important piece of this last month and moving, moving the city forward. We've spent a significant amount of time preparing for our mid-year budget adjustment that you approved today. And I want to thank you for that. We completed cannabis compliance inspections on our cannabis businesses. Have identified some issues and are moving forward with some enforcement measures and just some minor compliance issues. And we'll be following up with follow-up inspections or some sort of mechanism to make sure that everyone is in compliance moving forward. And then, of course, our filing and records management efforts are, are continuing. Randy is really working hard and trying to come up with a better system so that we can retrieve documents easier and more effectively. Public Works, we survived the storms relatively unscathed. I want to say thank you to Ron Fuji. His continued yearly efforts for storm prevention and storm maintenance have really paid off. We had a very bad storm and had no issues really to speak of. And right now Ron is working on looking at our curbs citywide. We have some, we've updated our streets, but we have some curbs that really need to be fixed. That goes to storm drainage, things like that. And this next year he'll be presenting a prioritized plan for that. And he's been working on that. In our police department, we have transitioned volunteer Ozell Murray to a reserve officer position. And we have recently acquired a second reserve officer. Ms. Yenelli Cuevas was hired. She has previous experience as an LAPD officer and she'll be starting as a reserve officer with us in expanding that. And we all know the value of our reserves with this COVID crisis that's affected our, our police department. There has been an enormous amount of training still going on with our police department. Just so you know, in the last month, three, three officers attended defensive tactics, bloodborne pathogens training, tactical communications. Six officers will be completing their CPR and first aid, driving force options, new RMS software. We're hosting a patrol rifle course. We're now providing training to other agencies and being a, a regional partner. End user training for sex offender registration, police use of force training. All supervisors attended the police use of force training and implicit bias trainings being scheduled with CSU PD in, beginning in March on Tuesday. It's March 8th and March 12th. And I believe also that we are hosting that training. So we are hosting more training and, and moving this training to the forefront. We had a, a major robbery case on the 31st of January that the police department subsequently investigated. And some fine citizen heroes helped to take a dangerous suspect into custody. He was threatening one of our clerks there. We're nearing our yearly evaluations on all our police officers. And we are submitting paperwork with the Department of Justice to get our records management and crime reporting efforts official and start. And on a exciting note, the Police Advisory Committee is planning to hold their first meeting, hopefully sometime in April. So we're working. We've got a lot going on and looking forward to the next couple of months. So thank you.
Thank you. All great news. Ms. Lintel?
Thank you. I attended the strategic planning meeting and it was very successful. I had some concern about how it would work since it had to be on Zoom, but it worked out quite well. And Maryland is an outstanding facilitator. Seaside sanitation February meeting was canceled. But I wanted to mention that finally, all the work on Rosita, a corner of Angeles, and Rosita has been completed. And all the ugly fencing, et cetera, equipment is gone. So I'm sure many of you have noticed that. Community Human Services, I attended a personnel committee meeting where we discussed, discussed our recommendations regarding the COVID vaccination policy for employees with our CEO, Robin McCray. And then I attended the CHS board meeting and there was an excellent presentation on street outreach programs for homeless youth from ages 18 to 24. There is one located, one facility in Salinas and one in the Monterey Peninsula. And the counselors give, with the purpose of this program is counselors give guidance and help in many areas such as obtaining social security. counselors give guidance and help in many areas such as obtaining social security cards, birth certificates, food banks, food stamps, and finding homes and employment opportunities. Robin McCray, who is the CEO, reported that there were many construction problems at Casa de Noche Buena, which are being resolved. And if anybody is interested in visiting Casa de Noche Buena Noche, they can call Community Human Services, or I would be happy to make arrangements for you. Development Director advised that things are looking pretty good for this year. And the following discussion action items were approved by the board. Final review of personnel policy revision, COVID-19 vaccination policy for employees, establishing a petty cash fund of $250 for Casa de Noche Buena, review of salary and salaries and, and approved as proposed by the Personnel Committee and modifications of the vacation accrual CAP. As I mentioned at our last city council meeting, that the salute to the flag has been returned, but not the invocation. And Mayor Kerr, I'm wondering if you've done anything to get that to be returned or what the status is, please.
So if I am correct, Alex, you and another council member can put it on the agenda for discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Is that correct, Alex?
That's right. The municipal code allows the mayor or, I've got to go back and check. It's either two or three other council members to place on the agenda, as well as the city manager or the city attorney.
Right.
Thank you very much. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Gagliotti.
So my notes. So I attended MST this month, and I was sworn in on the board. We recognized the January and February employees of the month. We received the annual budget audit. I haven't been able to dive into the budget yet, but the high-level takeaway was that despite the 75% reduction in ridership, we're still well-capitalized. And that's a function largely of the mix of the revenue streams, which are largely subsidized by transportation grants. So I believe only about 25% or less of, of the operating budget comes from the rider, rider fees or the ride affairs. The highlight of the meeting was the tangible steps towards realizing the Surf Bus Way. And this is the project that repurposes the train tracks right away. It repurposes the train track right away, not the train tracks. They're going to leave the train tracks in place for dedicated bus travel. We're still several years away from actually building a new road, but we've hired the engineers to flesh out some of the details. I also attended the Water Master, the TAC and the Water Master, which is the Technical Advisory Committee and the full board. And so in response to this year's findings from the saltwater intrusion annual report, the state that states that we're seeing the beginnings of saltwater intrusion in the basin, the board authorized the moving of several data loggers to wells closer to the coast. A data logger is an electronic recorder that will measure and record minute-to-minute soundings of water levels and the conductivity for test waters. And connectivity is, is a, an indirect way of actually measuring the salinity of, of the water. The, to date, we, we only ever collected data on an annual and semi-annual basis. And even at those, at that frequency, we, we are seeing, we have been seeing the precursors of saltwater intrusion in Fort Ord Wells nine and 10 for the last six years. So now we will be collecting that data. This is, I'm sorry, the data we collected. We'll be collecting that data, log, the log data quarterly, but still analyze it annually. But what this gives us is it's a richer dataset. So it'll provide us a better trending information for, which is gravely needed. The basin does not have a plan right now, or the Water Master does not have a plan right now to mitigate the issue. All we're doing is we've just increased monitoring. And, and I do, I do want to say one thing here is that, I mean, this is a, this is a very real threat. Is it is an existential threat to one of our two groundwater supplies on the peninsula. We only have two. And we're mandated to reduce pumping it to by 60% of one of them, which is the Carmel River by the end of the year. And we're already over pumping the basin by 1,500 acre feet a year. And we have, we're in total overdraft, a total of about 14, 45,000 acre feet. So this is, we, we have to do something. And we, we are seeing this existential threat coming. And it's, we, we need to respond to it. And so what we actually do is, is still yet to be fleshed out. But the, the threat is real. And, and now for, I guess, the first time in the 10 years of this report, we are making the definitive claim or the definitive statement that saltwater intrusion is starting, is happening in the basin. And with that, that's, that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Donaldson.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I completed my new council member academy training last month. Also had an introductory meeting with the Executive Director of Ambag. And the, the big takeaway there is they are the ones that provide the numbers for our mandatory affordable housing numbers. And based on my discussion, we should get those late summer, early fall. Yesterday, I had the Monterey One Water meeting. We have a new chair, which is Mary Ann Carbone, the mayor of San City. We also voted, probably the biggest thing, we also voted on beginning the process of updating the SEIR for the Pure Water Monterey Expansion Project to address the change to the injection well facilities component of that document. You might have heard last update, we've got two deep injection wells that are being added, and they should come online in November of 2021 and February of 2022. And those wells need to be included in the SEIR before it'll go forward. The staff, the Monterey One Water staff will begin work on that document, determine costs and reach out to some of the major partners to make sure their questions and comments have been properly addressed. It will not, though, involve an additional public review. And then once work is complete, we can start the process of moving that SEIR forward. The Program Manager for the Pure Water Monterey Project described it as, as hitting its stride with the injection of water into the seaside basin that is meeting their expectations. And like I said before, the deep wells are projected to be completed on time. They also, or we also talked about the service rates and the possibility of raising those. And staff has been directed to present a rate study to the Budget Committee, and that will happen in March. And then also, the furloughs that had been taking place due to the, the COVID, COVID issues, all those furloughs will end by the end of next month. And then two other things, I've been working with Ron Fucci so that we can place some oak trees in the median on General Jim Moore, where the seaside border goes basically to the end of the median. So we got room to put in about 21 oak trees in there. And we're slowly but surely working towards doing that. And I know we've got some volunteers out there that are going to help with that. And then lastly, for the Safeway gift card program, we ended up getting another $4,000 from Safeway. And I've been working with David Kimball to determine how that's all going to be, be played out. But that $4,000 will go towards another 80, $50 gift cards. And that's my report.
Thank you. And where are we? Kim Shirley.
Thank you, Mary Kerr, Mayor Kerr.
That's okay.
I, I know. Okay, you guys are going to all be jealous. But I attended the odor town hall meeting in Marina because Marina is having some issues with some odors. And so it, it was actually a great meeting in that there was a ton of stakeholders there, lots of people presenting. So it was really a nice display of people coming together. There's definitely some finger pointing, some finger pointing at M1, some finger pointing at the waste district, some finger pointing at the ag industry. So it's going to be really interesting to see who comes together. We're hoping that the stakeholders will come together and put some money forward and actually do a study so they could actually see what the source of this odor is and then mitigate it for those poor residents who live in Marina who have to deal with these odors. I also completed the League of California Cities Council training last month. I also had a meeting with the Director of Finance Administration for the Waste Management District. He was teaching me some budget 101 rules just because I ended up by being on the Budget Committee for the Waste Management District. On Mondays at 3:00, I also attend the COVID updates through the counties. So it's nice to be there with other electeds to hear the updates. I also attended our strategic planning meeting on February 2nd. I attended the Finance Committee meeting for the Waste Management District, and we helped give them direction for the Last Chance Mercantile Decision Process. We got an update on their budget process. On February 4th, I attended an Economic Development Roundtable with CalCities. Clearly, there's different cities that are struggling with COVID issues, and there's a clear distinction between those that are highly influenced by hospitality and those who are not. And so how they're dealing with it is pretty interesting. I also attended the Seaside ADU event because I was really interested to see how they were, you know, playing that out. And that was really, that was super interesting to sort of look at their pre-approved plans, to see how they're handling water for ADUs. And so it just gave me some better insight with that. Let's see, along with Mayor Kerr, on February 5th, we met with someone from the Local Government Commission who talked to us about a potential grant opportunity for doing some public planning and visioning for our city in terms of thinking about development within our city. So it was good to hear about that opportunity. Let's see, we had the Special Accounts Meeting on February 9th. I went to the February 10th League of Women Voters Meeting that had hosted Dave Stolt, the General Manager of the Water Management District, because he was talking about the public buyout of our water system. I attended the Ambag Meeting on February 10th. It was actually short. It was lovely. And we approved the draft Monterey Bay Metropolitan Transportation Improvement Program so that can continue to move forward. We are going to be getting presentations on the sanctuary next time, so it'll be a longer meeting. I attended the SDRO meeting. We are having a Butterfly Garden Workday this Saturday. We're going to be working in shifts. And so we can have smaller groups of people who could spread out. And we're going to be doing that from 9:00 to 12:00. So if you'd like to sign up, please let me know. We also had a very successful rainwater catchment seminar. There was over 100 people who attended, and so we got to review that. We're also working on a grant opportunity for Sustainable Delray Oaks, where we're going to be looking at the wetlands. We, I haven't, I haven't got the final approval from our city manager yet, but we'd like to look at our wetlands within our city. So all the way from Safeway to the end of 17 acres, looking at the whole wetland area there. And so looking at the, the biology of what's there so we can sort of understand how to better, better take care of that. So we're excited for that grant opportunity. On the 12th, I went to a Climate Action Plan Meeting with Mayor Kerr, also the mayor from Solidad. And we spoke with the Sustainability Manager from the county, Ashley Paulsworth, about moving forward with climate action plans for the county and for the city. On the 13th, I took part in the Monterey Peninsula Housing Coalition. It was a retreat that we had for four hours to, with other electeds, with people from MBEP, people from the county. And we were able to just get to know each other a little bit better. And we were, worked really hard at trying to establish a mission statement for the group that would show what we hope to achieve. On the 17th, I attended a League of Women's, or League of Cities, California League of Cities Roundtable on homelessness because I wanted to see just how other cities are tackling this. There was a lot of talk about pallet housing, which are just kind of modular houses with communal showers and bathrooms. On the 17th, I attended a Mayor's and City Council Roundtable on an economic discussion on how cities are taking care of themselves again with the COVID issues. So there were some interesting things there. I did the, I did my AB 1234 training, the ethics webinar. So I did that this last Thursday. And then this last Friday, we had the Waste Management District where they had a resolution of appreciation for Dennis Allian for his tenure on the board. We had a really interesting presentation on SB 1383, which is a climate change legislation which will force all organic matter to be composted. And so I asked them to bring that presentation to us. So we should be able to, we should be able to see that next month. We also had a report on the Last Chance Mercantile. So we're, we're looking to reopen the Last Chance Mercantile, and they're looking to decide between two nonprofits or the district. So there's three options, either the district would reopen it or to these two nonprofits. So we had discussions around that. And then they had a great report. They had done $3.5 million worth of upgrades on their material recovery facility. And it turns out they're, they're getting a larger return. And they've got more things that they're recycling, and they're getting more money for it. And it's, it's equipment that they, they put forward, and it's working out great. So that's my report.
Okay, thank you. So tied to what John mentioned about, well, the TAMC Board Meeting notes are in the agenda packet, but there was a special award to MST because of their support of the community needs during the downturn in ridership. They provided buses for Wi-Fi hotspots. They delivered food via Meals on Wheels, and they donated two mini buses to a medical clinic to provide service to the ag workers. So that was really nice. Rather than a chronological format, I've organized my report by topic. Sometimes I just get bored and want to do things a little differently. So as far as city council and staff meetings, I enjoy my weekly meetings with Acting City Manager Hoyn on all kinds of city activities. On Tuesday, the 2nd, I also attended the Strategic Planning Meeting where we laid out priorities for the next six months. You can see the work that was accomplished via the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats document in this month's packet, as well as the strategic grid that is updated each month as the city manager complet ticks things off his box. Friday, February 5th, as he mentioned previously, I joined Acting City Manager, Legal Counsel and Denise Duffy and Associates to begin identifying next steps related to Delray Oaks Gardens. As you heard, things are moving very positively. Sorry. On Tuesday, February 9th, the Finance Committee met, and it was, it has thus far been a complicated fiscal year, as we discussed earlier, because of Dino's leave of absence and now resignation and Kim's departure, as well as the effects COVID has had on our businesses. This was the first time we had a full council meeting to discuss our budget and recommended changes, and I really liked it. As far as City Residents Group, I too joined the February 11th Sustainable Delray Oaks Meeting. And thank you, Kim, for reminding me. I need to sign up for my hour this Saturday. And I also, it's interesting, you know, with Zoom and these webinars, you never know who's also there. So I too was at the rainwater catchment class that was hosted by Sustainable Delray Oaks, partnering with Monterey Peninsula Water Management District and CalAM. As Ms. Shirley also indicated, there were over 100 attendees learning the different types of easy at-home ways to collect rainwater for later use. And SDRO is planning two more classes, one of which on gray water, and I can't remember the, the other one. I also understand that David Kimball, who has been the President of the Citizens Action Group, is stepping down, and elections will be taking place at the April meeting. So I just want to say big thank you to David for your years of hard work on behalf of our community. As far as COVID goes, each Monday, you know, it's interesting that Councilmember Shirley called them COVID meetings. They're actually executive meetings, but it, you know, the only thing we talk about these days is COVID, of course. And we received updates, of course. The last meeting, there were 40 city council, city managers, mayors, supervisors and other county executives. A lot of discussion about the number of vaccines being increased because the state is shifting towards a total population from one that they were originally sending allocations to multi-county healthcare providers, and the Monterey County doesn't have one. And the Monterey County doesn't have one. So those are like Kaiser and things like that. So we were, just by essence, getting fewer vaccines. So that, they've recognized the impact that that has on counties such as ours. So they're now going to be doing it by per capita. And for those of you that may not know, March third marks when individuals aged sixty four to seventy four who have not already been vaccinated can start to sign up. On March seventeenth, individuals between the ages of sixteen and sixty four with a medical condition can sign up to get vaccinated. I would highly suggest using Monterey's United Ways Two One One. They have trained professionals to help figure out the different avenues to get a vaccine, and they can help set up appointments. On Thursday, February fourth, I attended a National White House briefing where the, the main focus was on the COVID relief package. And in particular, they were talking about, for the very first time, they're including three hundred and fifty billion dollars that will be distributed to all nineteen thousand municipal governments across the nation. If passed, these cities, the cities like ours with population under fifty thousand would be allocated funds per capita with multiple years to draw down. And then on February sixteenth, tied to the same topic, the National League of Cities similarly looked at the federal package and the effects and possible mechanisms for us to get the funding. And additionally, the league is wanting to, a portion of the twenty billion dollar state windfall to come to counties and cities. And some uses for that funding, for this particular funding, might be rental assistance and small business help, which I think we are seeing that our small businesses could use help. On the topic of water, I too went on Wednesday, February tenth, to the League of Women Voters presentation by Dave Stolt on the future of our water supply and the CalAM buyout. He described the process and the logical stumbling, quote, legal blocks that, to get us to public ownership. Last evening, I dropped in into the Monterey One Water Meeting to hear the discussion about the supplemental EIR for the Pure Water Monterey Expansion. As Mr. Donaldson described, staff will be doing preliminary work to understand the full scope of what is needed to bring it back to a vote. Housing, I too, on Saturday, February thirteenth, attended the Monterey Housing Coalition, met to do some strategic planning. Representatives from each city and supervisor representation was in attendance. There's a lot of discussion on how to prioritize affordable housing. Does that mean actual housing that is affordable or just stock? You know, housing stock, and there's a theory that that will lower the price of everything. The next topic is climate action. So I've been having discussions with the new Chair of the Mayor's Committee, Solidad Mayor Ana Velazquez, about the needs of her city that match ours. And after that, I arranged a discussion with Monterey County Sustainability Coordinator Ashley Paulsworth to discuss a regional approach to climate action planning. Ms. Paulsworth will be presenting to the county supervisors a plan for a countywide climate action plan. And after our conversation, she is considering proposing the idea of adding addendums for each jurisdiction. So what that would do is save each city that doesn't have one money and time and provide much-needed consistency countywide on our climate plans moving forward. The Mayor's Meeting was on February fifth. California Senator John Laird joined us to discuss his new position in Sacramento and the plethora of committees he's on. It's helpful for us to know our representatives and to have him on so many to represent our needs at the state level. A couple of them that he's on are the Natural Resources and Water Committee, the Senate Budget Committee for Education, and the Joint Legislative Committee on Budget. February twenty ninth, I had a Zoom call with the nonprofit Local Government Commission. In addition to their annual Building Livable Communities Policymakers Conference, they provide community land use and transportation planning, as well as public visioning and the grant work to get that work done. Unfortunately, we missed a key deadline for this year for the grant to be able to assist us with that. The same day, I also was able to connect with our local branch, the California Conservation Corps. They provide much of the workforce for the projects tied to California state grants, such as Prop sixty eight Parks for All. I wanted to understand what they offer and how they might be able to use their help. In addition to the parks funding we will be receiving, they also received a large chunk of change and are available to assist cities with item, with projects such as wetland restoration and things like that. So they may be a really good resource for whatever work we may have coming up. And it's also a great program for young people to get out and do important physical work. So on that, I am done. And, excuse me, while I get the last thing, number nine is correspondence. Please take a look at the agenda packet for the MST, TMC, the mosquito abatement, and the United Veterans Council highlights. And our next meeting date is Tuesday, March twenty three, twenty twenty one, at six o'clock. Obviously, we discussed having a very quick special council meeting to vote on the hiring committee, but that will be scheduled over the next week or so. And on that, we are adjourned. Thank you, guys, for hanging in there and we'll see you soon.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
All right.